Yes, for the kids, but we ended up going to all the elderly apartments and things.
Oh.
Yeah.
See what happens.
Yeah.
It's nice that they have them.
No, yeah, it was really fun, you know, and I knew.
Yeah, yeah.
I wanted to actually examine like a homeowner's.
They had questions, they interviewed us.
It was.
It went really well.
All right, that's all the things we have to do.
Thank you.
But I don't know if that was.
All right, here you go.
Yep.
So what did you want to move?
Um. Sure. To this one, to right after. Are they talking about pulling something?
Um. This is the biggest agenda ever.
We're so proud.
We are. All right, everyone ready to go?
We've added 4C-10, which is a micro resurfacing hours sort of thing. Like keep have that, that's a consent item normally, but that's on the table.
Perfect. Are you ready to go?
Yes.
All right, welcome everyone, we will get the meeting started. In just a moment. There we go. Welcome everyone to the August 7th, 2013 Shakopee City Council Meeting. Item number one, Ms. Wecklen, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Sherman?
Here.
Councilmember Lehman?
Here.
Councilmember Clay?
Here.
Councilmember Whiting?
Here.
Mayor Tadke?
Here. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, approval of the agenda. Do we have any additions or corrections to the agenda? Mr. McNeil?
Mr. Mayor, if we could propose to add 4C-10, which regards extended working hours for our County Road 16 resurfacing project. And then in terms of the order to take the most efficient use of a paid consultant, if we could move 10F2 to the area just after the Economic Development Authority meeting.
Any additions or correction from council? All right, seeing none, entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Council Sherman?
Second.
Senator Clay, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passed unanimously. Item number four, consent business. Any items to remove from the consent agenda this evening? Seeing none, Council Whiting?
I'm moved to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Senator Clay, any dis- uh, sorry. Mr. McNeil, please read the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. 4A1 approves distribution posting of a draft DAW of the OPUS Development of Property Located on Valley Park Drive Adjacent to the Proposed Emerson Project. 4B1 declares unusable equipment from discontinued squad cars as surplus property and authorizes proper sale of these items to a police equipment company. 4C1 approves installation of stop signs at the intersection of Alden Avenue and Mathias Road. 4C2 authorizes execution of Amendment Number Three by and between the City of Shakopee and Fourth Engineering for future consulting engineering services. 4C3 approves replacing existing overhead power lines on Fourth Avenue from Shenandoah Drive approximately 900 feet east and placing underground. 4C4 declares five Crown Victorias as surplus property and authorizes proper sale of these vehicles at auction. 4C5 approves the purchase of one new aerial truck from Rosenbauer Minnesota LLC in the amount of $935,096 from the Capital Equipment Service Fund and further declares a 1994 Simon Duplex aerial truck as surplus property and authorizes proper sale of this truck. 4C6 adopts Resolution Number 7336, accepting a bid from Northwest Asphalt Inc. for the Valleyview Road Improvements Project Number 2012-7 in the amount of $603,079, excuse me, nine cents and approves a 5% contingency amount on this project for use by the city engineer to authorize change orders. And further authorizes appropriate city officials to execute an extension agreement with WSB and Associates for the construction staking services needed on this project. 4C7 approves quote from Goverstate Seal Co. Inc. in the amount of $49,683.78 to be paid from the 2013 park maintenance budget and authorizes staff to proceed with the project. 4C8 approves the purchase of one new John Deere tractor and snow blower from Ag Power Enterprise Inc. in the amount of $57,952.34. One new mower from Titan Machinery in the amount of $9,493.71. One new V plow from Schultz Oriental Iron Inc. in the amount of $5,557.50. 4C9 approves purchase of one new car wash equipment from New Star in the amount of $50,376. It also authorizes the purchase of listed car wash building repairs, the amount of $38,587. 4C10 was added to the agenda tonight and that allows for extended working hours for the County Road 16 resurfacing project and others. 4D1 accepted the resignation of Sean Remy from the position of paid-on call firefighter effective July 15th, 2013. 4D2 authorizes the job, excuse me, approves the job description for the position of planner to and authorizes promotion of Kyle Saboto to this position effective August 8th, 2013, except D of grade eight of the 2013 pay plan. 4D3 authorizes the hire of Brian Berman and Alfredo Amundares as paid-on call firefighters. 4E1 approves the parking declaration advisory board's recommendations of renaming Parcel 75 Park and Dog Park to South Bridge Community Park. 4E2 authorizes staff to enter an agreement with WSB and Associates in the amount of $58,100 to prepare final design and specifications for the Parcel 75 Park and Dog Park. 4F1 approves bills and payments, electronic transfers, in the amount of $2,39,660.63. 4F2 approves amendments of the July 16th, 2013 City Council Meeting. 4F3 approves not waiving monetary limits on tort liability for upcoming property and liability insurance renewal. 4F4 approves setting a hearing for the, to review the actions of Magnet Management Corporation doing business as Valley Fair for liquor violation for Tuesday, September 3rd, 2013 at 7 o'clock PM. 4F5 approves the application, grants an on-sale liquor license to Shakopee 1997 LLC doing business as Cub Liquors 1262, Verling Drive and rescinds the current liquor license held by Crossroads Liquor at that same address. 4F6 approves the application, grants a massage therapist license to Jessica Snyder, Balance B Bodywork, 113 Lewis Street South. And finally, 4F7 approves requested revision for the adjustment of the existing joint powers agreement with Scott County for assessing services.
Thank you very much, Mr. McNeil. Any further discussion on those items? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passed unanimously. Move on to item number five, recognition of involved citizens by city council. So this is a time for the meeting where if folks have an item they'd like to discuss that is not on the agenda this evening, they can come to the podium and talk about it. Anyone to discuss an item that is not on the agenda? All right, moving on to public hearings. Item number six A, consideration of Minnesota Investment Fund application for Compass Data Center LLC. We need a motion to open the public hearing. Council Whiting?
Make a motion to open a public hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Council Lehman, seconds, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passed unanimously. We are in public hearing. Ms. DiMaggio.
Good evening. Tonight I'm here to ask you for your permission to apply for a Minnesota Investment Fund on behalf of Compass Data Center. Compass Data Center, this public hearing was originally scheduled for May 21st and it had been continued. Tonight they are ready to move forward with their application. They are asking that we apply on their behalf to Deed for their Minnesota Investment Fund in the amount of $90,000. This will be a grant from Deed to the City of Shakopee. The City of Shakopee will then issue a forgivable loan to Compass Data Center. In return, Compass Data Center or their tenant, whoever is going to be creating the jobs, will agree to create 18 jobs.
Any questions on the item? All right, anyone in the audience like to discuss about, with regard to the public hearing? You have one coming up behind you. Mr. Olson, please sign in.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I'm Jordan Olson, I live at 249 Mount Street. I would just like to quick point out, the Compass Data Center thing, we've abated their taxes already, right? So they sat here and told us they didn't really need that money, they just kind of like it for their 7% growth rate. I would just like to ask the council not provide any more money that they don't need. If there's anything you'd like to ask me, go ahead.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? All right, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Council Whiting?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Senator Clay? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passed unanimously. Um, so I need a motion on item number six A. From anyone? Council Clay?
Offer Resolution 7339 regarding the authorization and approval for a Minnesota Investment Fund application grant agreement and forgivable loan in connection with the Compass Data Center's LLC development.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Senator Whiting? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Passed 4 to 1. Thank you very much. Moving on to item number six B, consideration of tax abatement, Resolution Number 7337, a Minnesota Investment Fund forgivable loan and sewer access charge credits for Shutterfly Inc. I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing. Council Sherman?
Motion to open the public hearing.
Do I have a second? Council Lehman?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passed unanimously. Ms. DiMaggio.
Thank you. I think a great way to introduce Shutterfly would be to show a recent news video that was done on them, so I'm going to start by playing that.
Made in America headline, straight from your family photo album. If you're like us, taking so many digital photographs now instead of film, just some of the image, in fact, we've taken on this made in America journey behind us tonight, so many smiling faces. Well, tonight, a way to turn your digital photographs into brand-new American jobs.
Code a color, gold 100 film.
That film we used to develop, as old as some of our family memories. So much has been made in recent years of a bygone era and the American jobs gone with it. But with so many of us now taking digital photos, our Made in America team included, what to do with them? Turns out, creating memories also creating brand-new jobs tonight. We were the first team allowed into this new factory. So how long has this been up and running?
Uh, today.
That's right, the first day. Meet Jeff Hausenbold, CEO of Shutterfly. 500 jobs in this factory already, he plans to double, 500 more. And what are they making? Custom invitations, albums, all with your digital photos. Every blue box here, an order from an American family. This one says, "Ahoy." This is a one-year-old somewhere in America having a birthday.
Someone having a birthday.
Keeping memories alive and American jobs, too. Now will you remember when this little guy turns two?
We will. We'll send you a notice.
I had a suspicion. This is their fourth factory and with it, they're luring some workers back to America. Welcome home.
Hi, thank you.
Meet Mary Diesel, quality control. She and her husband moving back from Japan, where they were doing the same thing there and shipping the photos back to America. And how long you been on the job?
About two and a half weeks.
Two and a half weeks. And still smiling.
Yes.
And if you're someone who thought the business of printing memories was a fading memory, listen to these numbers tonight. So how many cards come off of one of these machines a day?
360,000.
360,000 cards off of every machine. And just look ahead of us there, how many machines are going? Easily millions of American memories printed every day. And coming down the conveyor belt while we were there. This is the cover?
Yeah.
Look at this, this is their newest album right off the conveyor belt here. And just one of the American workers behind it, Gloria Massey, a machine operator, a memory machine. What do you make of your new factory?
Oh, love it. The future looks bright.
The future bright, and on this album, the past is too. 60 years of Ray and Marcy, the new album, shipping out, all part of a surprise. And when we called the daughter who custom ordered it?
Hi, David.
Meet Tammy, so proud of her parents.
I guess the secret's out of the bag now. Happy 60th anniversary, Mom and Dad. Love you guys.
Celebrating her parents and those American workers on the job tonight.
Made in America! Woo!
And happy anniversary, the whole family in on that surprise here tonight on World News. And Diane, if you're watching, they sent me back with a couple of these photo albums, a lot of fun to flip through, I'll leave it right here on the desk for you. Diane's back on Monday.
I'd like to take some time to tell you a little bit more about Shutterfly. Shutterfly is an internet-based social expression and personal publishing service that was founded in December 1999. They are a publicly traded company, their headquarters is in Redwood City, California. They currently have two manufacturing facilities here in the US. One is in Phoenix, Arizona, one is in Fort Mill, South Carolina, and hopefully soon their next one will be in Shakopee, Minnesota. Shutterfly Inc.'s family of brands includes Shutterfly, Tiny Prints, Wedding Paper Divas and Treat. Shutterfly also provides free online photo storage. They store billions of photos for millions of people. I thought one thing that was great when I initially met with them, they had told me they hadn't lost a photo yet. Majority of the revenue at Shutterfly comes from their professionally-bound photo books. They also have greeting cards, stationery and personalized calendars. They also make other photo merchandise, as we saw in the, in the, in the clip that we just witnessed, they also make mugs with pictures on them. They'll do tons of different things with your pictures. Their busiest season is around the winter holidays. Some of their most commonly ordered products are their personalized photo books, their holiday cards and their calendars. The product, or the proposed project is being proposed in Dean Lakes. There are four lots right now that would be combined into one lot. This would be 22.8 acres. Here is an aerial view of it. The proposed office production space is 158,000 square feet. There is room for a potential expansion. The total project cost for this is approximately $60 million. 34 million of that would be an investment made by Shutterfly. They would use those funds to purchase machinery and equipment, furniture fixtures, et cetera. $26 million would be invested by Ryan Company, they would actually build the building and they would lease it back to Shutterfly. Shutterfly would have what's called a triple net lease. So with that, that would require Shutterfly to pay rent, as well as the property taxes, insurance and the maintenance for the common areas. Here are their employment numbers. Within the first two years, Shutterfly would create 258 new full-time jobs. After five years, it's their goal to be at 329 permanent full-time positions. It's also important to note that seasonally, Shutterfly will bring on extra workers to help during their peak seasons. They estimate that that will be about 425,000 additional hours, which equates to about 204 permanent full-time positions. The annual payroll for Minnesota will be 12.5, excuse me, 12.9 million. The average annual wage is 39,000. Average wage per hour is 1,878. They do offer bonuses and with that, the average wage goes up to 1,967 and the hourly value of benefits is $4.52. They're hoping that construction could potentially start in September of this year and it would be complete by June of 2014. Greater MSP prepared an economic impact study for us and they anticipate that 1.7 jobs will be created elsewhere in the economy because of this project. The funds that they're requesting tonight would be to help start up their business. They would use this to help cover any extra costs. I know one of the other buildings that they were looking at would be in Wisconsin. If they would have gone the Wisconsin route, it would have been an existing facility, which would have been a lot less startup costs. Since they're coming here to Minnesota and the building has to be built from the ground up, they will incur more costs. What they're requesting from the city is 100% abatement for nine years. They have a low estimated market value of the building and a high estimated market value. It's somewhere, the building market value ranges between 12 million and 16 million, which shows that the city's annual abatement could be somewhere between 61,000 a year and 81,000 a year. The estimated total city abatement over nine years would be 500, somewhere between 569 and 758,000. They're also requesting up to 60 Met Council Sewer Access Charge Credits and City Sewer Access Charge Credits. Those have a value of 174,000. And they are also asking for the city to apply for a Minnesota Investment Fund forgivable loan on their behalf. And tonight I will ask the EDA to be the person who would apply on their behalf to Deed, so that will come up during the EDA meeting. They are also requesting 100% nine-year abatement from Scott County that has a value between 551 and 734,000 over nine years. The county's also been working with them to see if there would be a need for their fiber infrastructure. It sounds as if there is and that would potentially be about 100,000. They're also potentially looking at a Job Skills Partnership Grant, which would help train their workers. This is a matching grant program and that would be about 400,000. So tonight I'm asking you for your approval for a nine-year 100% economic development property tax abatement from the city. I'm also asking that you issue 60 SAC credits. And as I said during the EDA portion, I'll ask for your permission to apply with, for the Minnesota Investment Fund. If you would like to move forward with all these, I'm asking you to approve City Resolution 7337. Tonight we're fortunate enough to have Ray Montalvo here from Shutterfly. And so if you have any additional questions, I think Ray would be happy to answer them. Do you have any questions of me?
Do we have any questions for Sam first? See?
Mayor, I don't know who to ask the questions to, but.
Well, should we let them finish speaking and then we'll see if any of them are answered?
Thank you, Samantha. Mayor, councilmembers, staff and members of the public as well, thank you for having me here and we are absolutely excited for this potential project and actually come to this, this place here and today. I cannot tell you after a number of months and close to a year in search for a potential new site for, for Shutterfly to actually call home, we've actually potentially ended up here in Shakopee, Minnesota. If I asked you eight months ago that I'd be standing here today and, and talking with you folks, it would be something of a different story, I think. We've, we've really looked long and hard and we've looked in many different places within the Midwest. We potentially found a, a very good home for us, not just to make the decision today, but also for the next 10-plus years. And we really do consider this as a real viable lifeblood, part of really the, the core component of what Shutterfly Inc. is all about. And when potentially we may end up here, we will have a number of employees and, and a great solid operation that actually does something quite similar, if not exact, to what you saw earlier on in the, in the report, which is really making memories come alive for all of our customers. So appreciate it, thank you very much.
Thank you. Did anyone else want to? Sam, did anybody else plan on speaking or? Okay? Okay, now open for questions. Council Lehman?
The first question I have is, in the resolution, page three, item G. In accordance with Section 469, 1815 of the Abatement Act, the city will add to its levy in each year during the term of the abatement, the total estimated amount of current year abated granted under the resolution. So my question, I guess, for staff is if the amount is 80,000 or whatever, we add that to our levy and then spread that amount out over the tax base?
Once.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Julie Eddington with Kennedy and Graven. I represent the city as their Public Finance Council. When an abatement is granted by a city, the abatement is collected by increasing the levy by the, the abatement amount. So here we have, we'll have an annual, an estimated annual amount and Julie, when she does the levy for the city, will estimate what the abatement will be for the following year and she'll add that as a separate line item in the city's levy.
Then the city levy is then spread out across the tax capacity of the city and the P, based on your rate, whatever residential or business property, you then pay your taxes, which covers the amount of the levy.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lehman, that is correct. And the city benefits from the abatement provided by having the property tax go back on the tax rolls after the abatement is over.
Okay, so we don't collect the tax and turn around and give it back. We, we take the, what we would collect or what we're abating, add it to our levy and collect it from the tax base as a whole.
Right.
Except those that are abated.
Mr. Mayor, Member Lehman, Shutterfly is going to be paying their property taxes as we go. So that, their payment of property taxes will offset the levy, the abatement levy.
Then why would the dollar amount of abatement be spread out over the rest of the tax base if we're getting it and turning it back?
Mr. Mayor, Member Lehman, the, the Abatement Act requires that the recipient of the abatement actually pay taxes. So although it's called an abatement, it really isn't an abatement of taxes. The property owner that's getting the abatement has to pay all their taxes, but the city has to prepare to be able to, to provide the abatement. So the year before, you levy an abatement levy equal to what you believe you will collect from the property that's going to be abated. So that abatement levy will be across the entire property of the city, but the city will, in the next year, the city will collect that same amount of taxes from the Shutterfly property.
As a clay. I think where the confusion is here is that Mr. Lehman is thinking that because we're setting it out as a line item on the, on the levy, that somehow that levy amount is being paid for by all the other taxpayers except Shutterfly, but actually Shutterfly is paying that portion of the levy and then it's being returned to them.
Mr. Mayor.
It's just kind of holding place for money that comes in and goes out. It's, it's not being paid for Shutterfly by the rest of the taxpayers.
Mr. Mayor, Member Clay, you're correct. So it's strictly the, the city taxes that we're talking about and you're right, the Shutterfly will pay those taxes, there'll be an abatement levy, but they will equal each, they will be the same amount and so the property taxpayers of the city won't pay anymore. The, the Shutterfly property will pay those taxes.
Okay. Next question then would be the, the lease arrangement on the property, if the, for some unknown reason, if Shutterfly wasn't to work out, would that property and building then revert back to Ryan?
Mr. Mayor, Member Lehman, that would be the subject to, the subject of the lease between Ryan and Shutterfly and I, I haven't seen that and they probably haven't drafted it yet. But from our own, the city perspective, if they were to vacate the building early, the Business Subsidy Act requires us to have them operate their facility for at least five years after they've received the benefit of the abatement. And if they vacate during that period of time, they'd have to repay a portion of the abatement that they receive.
Okay. And then I didn't receive any kind of financial information about Shutterfly in the information that I have. And I, I think the, this process that we have is pretty rapid and there's not a lot of time to digest what little information that, that I've received. So I, I took the liberty of, of finding my own and hopefully I have the right company. It's the July 31st, Shutterfly, second quarter 2013 financial results that were posted in the Business Wire. Is it the same company that's in Redwood City, California, correct?
Yes.
Based on that information, as of June 30th, 2013, the cash and qua, cash equivalents of this company is 365.8 million dollars with a gross profit margin of 46%, 49% in second quarter and it goes on and on, so with the information that I was able to find on my own, it begs the question of exactly, you know, what's, what kind of assistance you're looking for. I mean, I understand the jobs portion of it, but it doesn't really look like they need the financial assistance. Just to comment.
Well, let's hold those till discussion then. Any other questions? I had one question for Ms. DiMaggio with regard to the lease. How, so we're talking about a nine-year abatement, how long would the lease then be for?
It's my understanding that their, their intention is to sign a 10-year lease.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Any other questions? All right, anyone in the audience like to speak? We've got one coming up already. You can come on up and sign in if you'd like from back there. You don't need to sign in again. You're good.
Hi, Mayor, members of council. Once again, I'm Jordan Olson, two forty-nine Mount Street. I just kind of want to bring out the point that the internet and everything moves so fast these days. It's hard to really know in nine years where this company might be. The mighty giant Facebook was kind of rocky when it went public for a while. A lot of people on Wall Street weren't quite sure about that. So I, I think it might, you know, to, to give a hundred percent city property tax abatement, I guess I'm still not a hundred percent on how that quite works when you say you're going to abate their taxes, but they're still paying them. And they also want to abate the county taxes. I just think that that might not be a wise investment on our point, considering the, you know, fast-paced move of the internet today. It's, is there any discussion we might have on that or anything?
What I'll say with regard to the abatement is that when we do these abatements, they do not increase individual business or homeowner's taxes. The tax base increases, and we capture that with levy, and then that gets abated back to Shutterfly. So it does not, the way we in Shakopee do it, it does not increase individuals' city taxes. So what this project will do is it will bring a lot of, all the taxes for the school district will increase dramatically. So there's a lot of benefit that way by having three hundred and twenty-nine, three hundred plus full-time jobs and between, up to eight hundred part-time seasonal jobs, I think is an extraordinary amenity to the city. And with regard to the business model that Shutterfly has, they have seen considerable growth over the last, since they were created, as you saw. And that we, we can't do anything about that, but as long as we believe in their business model, I, at least I am comfortable with that.
Right, but even though they're, they're growing at a very, a nice pace, and they're making a lot of money, where, you know, do they need the help?
That's a very good question.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir? Thank you. Could you say your name and address, please?
My name is Kevin Gillick. Two addresses, one, one thirty-six Sixth Avenue East, which is residential, and the other is three thirty-three Second Avenue West, which is commercial. So we own, we pay taxes on both sides of that ledger within Shakopee. The questions that we're going to ask earlier were raised by the other gentleman and, and by Councilman Lehman. So I'll, I'll jump to a different question because I'm confused after reading the Shakopee Valley News, which has covered two articles on this, and then today's Star Tribune. There hasn't been any evidence that I've seen that tells the Shakopee people what is the criteria by which we choose to do these abatements. Is it out-of-state companies that we want to lure in because we're creating new jobs in the state of Minnesota? Well, I thought that might be it, but then we're doing things for Rosemount and Data Card, which doesn't actually create any new net jobs. It just gives people a different commuting pattern. Is it, we're doing it for public companies? Are we doing it for private companies? It doesn't seem that we're doing it based on a needs assessment because, as Councilman Lehman said, companies seem to be fairly well endowed in the cash holdings that they're sitting on. So since we seem to be doing a lot of these lately, and I'm assuming that there's going to be more coming down the pipe, do we, the residents of Shakopee, have any stated criteria? Or have you, the council, agreed on any criteria by which we all know that these abatements are in line with something that's been discussed and evaluated as being sound?
I will let Ms. DiMaggio start with that one, economic development coordinator. Explain the process, how these go, please.
Sure, and I think that you have some very viable questions there. So when a company comes to me and potentially asks to come to town, one of the first things that I let them know is that everybody who's going to create jobs here in town has to pay at least fourteen dollars and fifty cents an hour. So unfortunately, that wipes out a lot of people that might potentially want to come and ask the city for help. That, that's a cash-only wage. The next thing that we have been looking at, and I've created a kind of an internal score sheet that I've been using so far. Unfortunately, Shakopee hasn't done a ton of deals, so I'm trying to figure out if the score sheet I created is actually viable. You know, as you score these deals, it's interesting to see, are they really a good deal? And I think that's something that, once we have this, I will be able to score every single project and be able to offer it up to you and to the council and to the EDAC and say, this is how this project scored. At this point, a lot of the projects that we have been scoring on are based on, or what I've been looking at, is the amount of jobs being created. In this case, three hundred and twenty-nine permanent new full-time jobs here in town that pay at least fourteen dollars an hour was the criteria that I brought this forward. I also like the fact that the investment that they're making, they're going to make a sixty million dollar investment here in town. I think that's huge. So those are kind of the projects that I've been bringing forward at this point. Rosemount Emerson, they are creating five hundred new jobs. Those are not jobs that exist in Minnesota right now. Those are brand-new jobs that will be in Minnesota, and they will be here in Shakopee. And so another thing there, I think their average wage is around eighty-five thousand dollars a year. Data Card, I think you make a good point. That is a different traffic pattern. But it's one that I'm pretty happy is going to be here in Shakopee, and I really hope that when those people are here working in Shakopee, that they're getting gas in Shakopee, that they're going to our grocery stores, that they're eating at all our restaurants. I really hope that by bringing those jobs here, and those jobs have an average wage of ninety-five thousand dollars a year. Their new employees, I think they told us a few weeks ago, is around eighty-five thousand dollars a year. And so I also hope that those people are buying homes here in Shakopee. I hope that their kids are going to start going to school here in Shakopee. I think that these kind of businesses that we're bringing into town are high-wage, highly-trained jobs. And I'm excited about Shutterfly because not everybody's an engineer, and I know that. And so I think they will offer something that's different than what potentially Data Card or Emerson is offering. Did I answer your question okay?
You did. I'm not entirely comfortable with it because it says the criteria goes anywhere from fourteen dollars an hour up to ninety-five thousand a year. And it means, in my opinion, when, it means that if anyone comes in with an ad hoc proposal, we judge it on an ad hoc basis rather than by some very strict criteria of what it is that we should be doing when we're abating taxes that are subsidized. I still think they're being subsidized by the residential and the commercial who aren't getting the abatements. But I'll let that go and ask the second of my two questions. The second of my two questions is, we've done a lot of these abatements lately. At what point do we say we're abated out? Is there a threshold over which we say we've now deferred or given away enough tax dollars that we need to stop for a while and see how this all plays out? Or are we, and, or are more and more people coming to us because we've, we're now looking publicly attractive? We're starting to do so many abatements that people are saying Shakopee's taxpayers and city council are an easy mark. They don't seem to have a threshold out there, so let's keep going at them and see if they keep saying yes.
Anyone want to talk about that? I can definitely talk about that. Oh, thanks. No, this project, they were talking about the Shutterfly project right now, I don't believe would be happening if we hadn't been talking about other incentives for other companies. And I disagree with you. I think it is a good thing. What we've got going on is this, we'll talk about this project specifically. This land has been sitting empty for well over a decade and hasn't been utilized, and has been paying taxes just on agricultural land for majority of that time, and has not been creating any, any new jobs, hasn't been creating a lot other than the, the minimal tax base that it is in the city right now. What my goal is and what, why I am passionate and working toward getting these deals done with the companies who want to partner with the city and partner with public entities on, on creating jobs and creating more wealth and wages within Shakopee specifically. I think it's important to work with them. We have sent the message that we are willing and want to work with companies for creating jobs and, like I said, wealth within, within Shakopee. And so these are projects that would not be happening if it weren't for that. So this is twenty-eight acres that we don't know how much longer it would sit empty for. The building where Emerson, the ADC two building, that building sat empty for thirteen years, and we got nothing out of that building while it sat there and, and wasn't utilizing. So now it is going to be utilized very soon and bring a lot more people into town and bring a lot more jobs and work into town for residents in, in the region, the southwest metro, and in Shakopee. It gives Shakopee residents other options. I think that we, as a county, have a goal of fifty percent of our, having enough jobs for fifty percent of our working population in Scott County. We're doing a really good job on, on meeting those goals, and Shakopee is really leading the way and getting that done. But if you look at how, how backed up one sixty-nine has been this past week, since it's been taken down to one lane, I am of the opinion that we need more high-wage, hot jobs for folks who have, are well-educated and want to work within Shakopee, who want to stay here and have a job as opposed to going to Minnetonka. Data Card is coming, big reason why they're coming to Shakopee is to tap into our, our highly-educated workforce that we have here in town that we know is here. But it, most of those folks are going to Minneapolis and Minnetonka for work. So we want to keep them here as much as possible. And so that's why I believe that this is good for the community, and it works well for the community because I don't agree with you that it raises your taxes. It actually reduces your taxes by bringing these companies here because especially like with this one, the school levy will be passed over more tax base, and you won't have to pick up as much of a chunk of that tax base. So it's, it goes with fiscal disparities. They still pay all the fiscal disparities. They still pay all the state property taxes. So all those are there. We are just helping them come here and partnering with this company who will give the city and the residents long-term benefit.
Let me, let me restate what I think I heard.
Okay.
Because my question is, is there a threshold over which we will say we've done enough abatements? What I heard was we have open land and open buildings, and it's a good thing to do that. So as the threshold, as long as we have open land and open buildings, we're going to continue to entertain any proposal that seems rational with what we maybe or maybe don't have as guidelines or criteria because we still have open land and buildings, and that's our threshold.
Ah, I can't speak for everybody up here, but my threshold is, A, there is a statutory, state statutory threshold that we cannot go. We are nowhere near meeting that state threshold of a percentage of our tax base of, of abatements and incentives. So we're nowhere near that threshold. So that's one hard and fast threshold that we wouldn't be able to go over. But my, my personal feel on that is that as we have absorption of all the land, because we do, have had a lot of land and a lot of open space in Shakopee to utilize and bring jobs there. And as that is absorbed and as our resources become more scarce, then we will absolutely, at least from my perspective, be pulling that back and not utilizing abatements and incentives as much. It's a supply and demand type thing, so that is, that is my, my side of it. But we do not, as a council, have a, a stated threshold that we will meet, no.
Okay, my final comments as to the people from Shutterfly. I'm really excited about you coming to Shakopee. I think you guys being here is a great thing. And I want you to understand that my questions have nothing to do with the promise of you coming to this community because it's a great community and a lot of hard workers. My concern is really more directed to the council and the absence of what seems to be a communicated strategy and some understanding of the taxpayers about the rules for doing this and the extent to which we're going to continue to do it. So I want to please help you to understand that that's where those questions were coming from, and I wish you the best of success in our community.
Councilman Clay?
Mr. Gillick, just to follow up, I had a couple of comments for you as well. I, I think you raise a very good point about having a, a formal written policy. We, we don't have one at this point in time. Throughout the last year, year and a half, as all this has been happening, we have at council discussed those kinds of issues and discussed, you know, what, what kinds of things are we wanting to look at? And what kinds of criteria do we want to, you know, set down to guide us through this process? And the whole, these whole development ideas and whether it's abatement or using, just using us to sort of pass through money from the State Department of Economic Development, the deed thing that Mr. Olson was commenting about earlier. There's, there's a lot of sort of things that are out there that we're kind of been discovering how they work and how, how best we can use them as we go. And our, the criteria for, you know, how much is too much? Or when, when have we reached that point where we, we've granted enough abatements and need to start rethinking that or slowing down? It's not just numbers and dollars amounts of tax abatement, but also the thing that we, we need to think about, I think, and struggle with maybe with some long discussions is, you know, there's, it's just not simply the number of jobs, but what kind of jobs are they? Are they jobs for people with just a high school education or, or a high school plus a couple of years of additional training? Those sorts of skilled jobs as opposed to highly-technical jobs or engineers, which require, you know, your four-year college degree or more. You know, but they're paying, you know, seventy, eighty, ninety thousand dollars a year or more. So we have to not only look at just the number of jobs, but what kind of jobs? And what, what ask, what, how was, are were those jobs and those, those dollar amounts or, or payments in wages, you know, are they, are we serving the community evenly? So that we're trying to find jobs for people across the whole spectrum of our potential employees in Shakopee? It's, it's, it's difficult. It's a difficult thing to really kind of wrap your head around and come up and say, you know, we know what we want. We want everything to work perfectly and, and the, the city to be prosperous and, and nobody to ever have a problem. But, you know, trying to come up with hard and fast criteria and rules to, to make those general goals possible is, is going to take us some work for a while.
I appreciate that it's difficult to make those decisions. It's even more difficult to communicate the rationale for them to the public. And so when it seems like sometimes it's a very well-off company out of state, a very well publicly traded, a different one privately traded. Some of these are very industrial manufacturing jobs. Others are very high-paid engineering jobs. It's not clear if we're trying to build an industrial corridor in Shakopee or to create another Silicon Valley. What's the strategy? Because you can put in place guidelines that attract either or both. And again, it gets down to what are we trying to accomplish and how high is the threshold?
My guideline for everything.
And I'm not, I'm repeating myself now, but I, I appreciate your difficulty. I do. Once you wrestle through that difficulty, I think it needs to be articulated well in the Shakopee Valley knows so people understand what the behavior of the council is relative to decisions like this. That's all.
Councilman Whiting?
I, I think it's key to look at each of these projects from a wide angle. You know, it, it's not always going to be the manufacturing. And I don't think that this body, and they may, but I don't think that, that we would be putting tax abatement towards something like retail jobs, something with those low-paying jobs. It's about the jobs. Now, we mentioned on this one that this is going to, for every job created, it's going to create one point seven jobs. So that adds a better value for our abatement that we're, that we're giving out. Now, if it was something that was a lot smaller, lower wages, something that wouldn't be a fit, and then we might look at it differently. But I think, yeah, you can't really pinpoint, all right, we want all medical device companies here. That'd be great. But they may not be looking for a new facility here. So we got to weigh each proposal separately and look at all those jobs and how many new jobs they're creating. I think I heard that every new job that brings in a number of employees, thirty percent of them will live in the community. Well, that adds the property values and things and buying up the houses that may be vacant and things like that. So each thing needs to be looked at, and, and I think the EDAC did look at this and try to find some criteria for us. And their suggestion was to leave it a little wider open so we can look at these jobs different, from a different angle.
Councilman Lehman, do you have anything you want to say?
Well, my first criteria that I try to look at for tax abatement when they're asking for assistance is do they actually need it? And I tend to, I tend to look over a P and L, which I haven't seen recently, in recent projects, which we did used to use years ago when I, when I started on the council. So it's a little different process that we have now than I'm, I'm comfortable with from the past, where the companies actually showed, here's the money we're putting into this, and here's what we're taking a loan on. Here's where we're short, and, and they actually went through it and showed what their plan was over the course of the abatement period and showed where their need was, financial need, and, and then we discussed the jobs and so on and so forth. And when the, the job pay structure was on the higher side, then we would consider a hundred percent tax abatement. When, when some of the jobs were high and some of them were low, then we would consider a fifty percent, and it was kind of a sliding scale type thing. Um, you know, I guess now I'm kind of wondering if, if these companies, maybe we should be asking these companies, Shutterfly included, if they're willing to sign a voluntary contract that a percentage of these jobs are actually going to go to people that reside in Shakopee.
How do you do that though?
Pardon me?
No, go ahead. I'm just talking to myself.
Because we really don't have a guarantee of the jobs actually helping the people that, that we serve. And state law doesn't allow us to, at least my understanding is state law doesn't allow us to require that them jobs go to citizens of Shakopee even though we're the ones that are giving them the financial assistance. Um, I guess you could broaden that to Scott County because Scott County's giving them assistance also. Apparently state law, my understanding, doesn't allow that either. But the state does get the benefit of the jobs being in Minnesota when they offer Minnesota funding. Um, and I guess I'm only asking for the same treatment as what the state expects. So, the only way to, to do that would be a voluntary requirement, or not a requirement, but a voluntary contractual agreement with whoever, and I'm not picking on Shutterfly, that a percentage of them jobs come to Shakopee or Scott County. The other concern I have on this one is they're, they're looking at a ten-year lease and their, and their abatement is nine or ten years and it's, and it almost looks like as soon as the abatement period stops, the lease happens to be over and now what? Now, we negotiate a, another ten-year lease and that's contingent on the city coming up with another ten-year deal. Um, so, I guess one of the requirements in the past that I've, I've appreciated was companies that actually made the investment in their own property. That gives me a sense of if they're going to continue to be here or, or at least they have skin in the game, uh, with their own property, their own building. So, them, them are just some of my basic comments that I have.
So, you think they're going to invest sixty million dollars into the building and then bail over three-quarters of a million after ten years?
They're leasing it. So, I don't know why you would invest sixty million dollars in a building and not own it and lease it from somebody else.
Okay, Counsel Sherman.
But there's, I would say to that, there's not only the investment of the property, but the, there's the investment in the people. And when you are bringing on that many people and having those relationships with those employees, um, that's a huge part of the business and making it successful and, um, you wouldn't walk away from that, um, very readily or without much consideration. So, um, you think about those employment relationships that are going to be created as well and that's another tie that binds, um, I would say in terms of the project. Um, over the four years I've been on the council, this, I feel like we've been building up to this point in re-establishing the Economic Development Advisory Council, um, having a lot of conversation about how do we grow the economy in Shakopee? How do we build business here? And, um, we've, we've had a great year, let's just put it that way. I mean, um, and when, and deals do attract other deals. So, I think what we're seeing is, um, the fruits of the labor of the past several years of making that investment of not just money, but conversation and, um, thinking through, I mean, Samantha is new on board, um, thinking through how do we, how do we actually do this and do it in a way that we're effective and that we are bringing businesses to Shakopee? Um, and it may be uncomfortable for some people because we're moving very quickly, which is not something that you're used to seeing from government perhaps. Um, so, I think that that speed and the ability to be nimble and react to the marketplace and, and what's happening, it's, it's new. It's very different. Um, and I appreciate it. I think, I'm, I'm proud of the council and I'm proud of the work that, um, the staff has done this year in terms of putting in the time and the investment and the, and the dialogue to get these deals done because I think, I think you're going to see, um, the payoff in, in the years to come. So, that's my perspective.
Exactly. And along with that, I couldn't agree with you more, Counsel Sherman, with what you just said, um, but along with that, we've had a significant number of jobs added to Shakopee that don't have any abatement whatsoever included in them, that there has been, uh, a lot of non-incentivized, uh, I'm not sure if I just made up a word there or not, but, uh, we've had a lot of, uh, jobs we haven't directly helped out and partnered with, um, that have happened within the last year and last few years in Shakopee. And I was just making a list as we were talking here and FedEx has, FedEx has done a, a huge expansion. Imagine Printing did three-hundred thousand square foot expansion. MWI Vet, uh, clinic consolidated multiple locations here into Shakopee from outside the state. Uh, Rar Malting is doing a lot of expansion here in Shakopee. Uh, there's Wine and Spirits Distribution Center. Opus is doing a two-hundred thousand square foot, um, spec building, which is brand-new, um, in, in the market. No one does spec buildings and they're starting to get back into that. Uh, Skanel Properties is, uh, doing a, uh, is broke ground on a building that will be three-hundred jobs. Progressive Dental just is investing a huge amount, um, for a small dental clinic, um, on 101, which is the first real investment we've had in town along, uh, for new building-wise along 101 in a long time. And so, I think that these are building momentum and creating, um, the type of economy that at least I would like to see and that I think council would like to see here in Shakopee. So, thank you, Mr. Gillik. We don't get a chance to actually talk about this stuff very often at council level in the meetings and so I appreciate your question there. Uh, Mr. McNeil, you had something you wanted to say?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, just, part of this would be echoing some of the other comments. First, just in terms of the lease versus owned, it's my understanding that the reason that they're looking at this business plan is because it significantly reduces the upfront costs that they would otherwise have to make as an investment. But, uh, Mr. Leek was kind enough to provide me with the business subsidy policy that Economic Development Advisory Commission had recommended and has now been adopted. That was as recently of, as May of last year, 2012. If you look at the success that Shakopee has had, yes, it is eye-opening. I mean, just in terms of the subsidized things over the past year or year and a few months, you've had TriStar, you've had Compass, you've had Emerson Rosemont, you've had Data Card just even announcing today. All of those are things that are, you know, any community would be significant by themselves. We've had that here in Shakopee. As we go forward, do we need to update our business subsidy policy? I think we do. But we've had success and this will allow us to be, perhaps be a bit more discriminating in terms of what we do. One of the things that we did before Samantha got here was to look at what other business subsidy policies were available in the southern metro area. And I'll say, at that time, we were ahead of almost everybody else. This will allow us to look at these sorts of things and see what else there was. I think the one thing that was in common with most of the other ones that we looked at was they wanted it open-ended, they wanted it to be looked at so these could be done on a case-by-case basis. You may not be comfortable in doing that any longer, but again, that's something that we're going to be getting more information on. Samantha's been here, what, three months now? Almost four.
Almost four.
And she hasn't quite gotten that one off her plate yet, but she'll continue to look at those things that will go to the EDAC and that will come back to you as a city council for, uh, consideration and adoption.
Counsel Lehman.
But we haven't looked at them in a case-by-case basis, Mark. This is the first information I received about Shutterfly was what I have in front of me, which is very limited.
Okay. Any other questions? Anyone else in the audience like to speak? Yes, sir.
I forgot my name at first, silly.
You do. I thought you were moving out of town.
Uh, another week. I'll be watching online though, so.
Thank you. We'll make sure to say hi every single.
Sure, you can wave back at the monitor for me. It'll be fantastic. Uh, Mr. Lehman, could you explain to the audience what a P and L is?
Profit and loss statement.
And do you think it's appropriate for you to be asked to make decisions about these sorts of ventures without one?
No.
All right, thanks.
Sounded like a cross-examination right there. I, uh, all right, um, any other questions from the audience? All right, thank you. I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Some moved.
Counsel Sherman, do I have a second?
Figure a second.
Counsel Clay, seconds. Any, uh, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passed unanimously. All right, any other final questions before we, uh, entertain a motion? Mr. Thompson.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I just want to point out two things. One, the resolution that's before you, it does not actually approve the development agreement. That will be coming back to you at a later date. And number two, I think Samantha stated this, but the public hearing you just conducted was actually a hearing you're conducting as the city council, but on behalf of the, uh, the EDA because the EDA, this grant is actually going to be through the EDA. I just want to make sure the record reflected that.
Do we need to take any action on that?
No.
Okay. Uh, any further questions? All right, seeing none, I entertain a motion to, uh, for consideration of tax abatement resolution number seventy-three thirty-seven. Counsel Whiting.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number seventy-three thirty-seven, a resolution granting a property tax abatement, sewer access charge credits, and a Minnesota Investment Fund forgivable loan for Shutterfly Inc. in the city of Shakopee.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Sherman. Any discussion? Counsel Whiting.
I'd like to add just one comment to gentlemen from Shutterfly. Uh, we've done these in the past and a lot of companies come, uh, are, a few companies have come to Shakopee and, uh, built here, taken our tax abatement and, uh, told the rest of the world in all their news releases that they're from Minneapolis. So, my, my, uh, agreement between you and I is, uh, in your, uh, in your, uh, marketing and things, I'd like to say that when, when you're talking about the Shakopee facility, that it's the Shakopee facility. So, uh, just a note, I've picked up on that.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Counsel Clay.
I would also like to thank you for being so patient here.
Yes.
I, I noticed a yawn or two. It's probably been a long day.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Passes four to one. Thank you very much. Everyone, I will, uh, now entertain a motion to recess for Economic Development Authority meeting. Counsel Sherman.
Make a motion to recess for Economic Development Authority meeting?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Clay. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passed unanimously. President Whiting.
I'd like to call to order the August seventh, two thousand thirteen meeting of the Shakopee Economic Development Authority. Uh, Ms. Weckman, could you please make note of the role?
Yes, Mr. President.
All right, item two, I'll look for an approval of the agenda.
So moved, sir.
Mr. Clay, uh, seconded by Mr. Lehman, all in favor?
Aye.
Agenda is approved.
No consent.
We have, uh, no consent items. Is that correct? Okay.
Correct.
Uh, item number four, general business, would be the consideration of the Minnesota Investment Fund application for Shutterfly Incorporated, resolution number thirteen-dash-four-D. Samantha?
Thank you. As I explained earlier, the public hearing was also held for this, the same resolution. They asked that you hold a, one for everyone at the same time, just for ease. So, what Shutterfly is asking is that the city apply on their behalf for a million-dollar Minnesota Investment Fund from Deed. Interestingly enough, how it works with the Minnesota Investment Fund, in previous years, cities were allowed one application per year. There was some changes this last year that has allowed the cities, if you have a city council or an EDA, to be able to do more than one. Deed has also opened things up, so if people want to apply directly to Deed, they're able to do that. So, for the year, our application for Compass would be the one from the city. This would be our second application of the year. So, technically, we would not be able to ask Deed for another application. I have had some interest from other people and we've been in discussions with the CDA in hopes that they could potentially apply for another business that would come to town. We could also ask Scott County to apply. And as Deed has said, worst-case scenario, we could go directly to Deed with the business and ask them to apply. So, there's many different ways that we can apply. Tonight, though, with Shutterfly, I'm asking the EDA to sponsor an application. So, how it would work is the EDA would ask Deed on behalf of Shutterfly for a million dollars. Based on the application and their approval process, they would then grant the city a million dollars. We would take that grant and issue a forgivable loan to Shutterfly. In return, Shutterfly is, is promising that they will invest thirty-four million dollars and create two-hundred-and-fifty-eight jobs over two years.
So, any other questions for Mr. Maggio?
Just to be clear, this is not our money. We're just funneling it through from the state.
It is somewhat of a pass-through. As, as it would talk about in business subsidy law, they would ask them to be here for five years. If there is an issue where Shutterfly for some reason would leave town, something would happen where the business would shut down, Deed would ask the city to try to retrieve those funds to the best that we could. If something ever happened though, Deed has never gone to a city and said, "Take the money out of your general fund and pay us back." That isn't something that happened. I know a good example would be with Northwest. Northwest had, Northwest Airlines had a deal, I believe in Richfield or Bloomington, that they were going to create jobs and stay in town. They ended up leaving early. Northwest then paid the money back to Deed. So, I think if anything were to ever happen, that, that's when we'd work with Shutterfly, but I don't foresee that being a problem.
Is there any other questions? I'll entertain, uh, a motion or is there anybody else going to speak? Mr. McNeil on this?
No one from staff.
Look for a motion. Ms. Sherman?
I'll offer resolution number thirteen-point-four, a resolution authorizing and approving a Minnesota Investment Fund application, grant agreement, and forgivable loan in connection with Shutterfly Inc.
Second.
Moved and seconded, uh, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Please make note, Mr. Lehman, in the dissent. Uh, that concludes our business tonight. I'll look through, for a, a motion to adjourn. Mr. Lehman?
Motion to adjourn to Tuesday, August twentieth.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
We stand adjourned.
All right, we reconvene in the Shakopee City Council meeting and we are going to move on to item number ten-F-two. Is that correct, Mr. McNeil?
Correct.
Setting public hearing for the issuance of solid waste revenue bonds to Recovery Technology Solutions. Ms. Maggio, again.
Tonight, since this is something that isn't familiar with the city, I've asked Julie Eddington to be here and she's going to actually describe RTS and what their proposal is and what they would like from the city.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Um, uh, RTS has come to the city and is in the process of getting planning approvals for locating their business here in town. And they plan on building a solid waste facility, specifically a facility that recycles, um, I believe asphalt shingles. And, um, in order to construct that facility, they have asked the city to consider issuing tax-exempt bonds on their behalf. They would be exempt facility, solid waste bonds. Um, these are tax-exempt under the tax code. Um, the process would be the city would issue the bonds, loan the money to RTS. They would be the borrower, they would be solely responsible for the bonds, the payments of the bonds. This would not affect the city's bank-qualified ability to, to issue bank-qualified bonds this year because these are, um, these are not within the bank-qualified type bonds that you can issue. Um, the, the revenues from the facility would be pledged to pay the bonds. There would also likely be a mortgage. Um, and there is a process to be able to issue these bonds. One of the, the, the pieces of the puzzle is that the borrower has to, um, go to the state to get what we call volume cap. And the state has a certain number of, um, bonds that they can issue each year for this type of facility and we would need to go to the state and apply for that on behalf of the borrower, borrower. The borrower would pay for all the costs related to the fees and deposits to get that volume cap. The other things that would need to happen is, um, we would need to go to the state and do what they call a deed application for the bonds. There would also be some documents to be drafted, a public hearing to be held by the city council in September and, um, and those kinds of things. Those costs are all paid by RTS. There are, uh, there is a representative from RTS here today if you have questions specifically about the project. They also have an attorney here, um, to discuss the structure of the deal if you are interested in, in, um, answering or asking questions about that. Mr. Mayor, member Lehman?
Before we get there, actually, can we have a quick, uh, recap as to what RTS does?
I, I would ask that the RTS representative come up and, and explain exactly what they plan to do in this facility.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, council member, RTS-
Mr. Mayor, councilmember, RTS, first approach, I believe Shakopee, probably about three months ago, to relocate our, precisely what we will do is we'll take tear-off shingles or roofing-based materials that are asphalt-based, take those out of the chain that are destined for landfills, and through a solvent process, extract the asphalt oil back out of there and then resell them as a commodity, as either roofing flux or asphalt-based cement. And to, and also the sand and granules that come off of a shingle, there's also value for those. One of our neighbors here in Shakopee has certened, they are very interested in that commodity to, in lieu of going to landfills, to recycle that and put back into their product. So that is basically what we're doing is to have a two-hundred-ton-per-day manufacturing facility that'll take approximately seventy-five thousand tons of waste heading for landfills out of that chain during the year.
Right, thank you, that's all I needed, I appreciate it. Council Lehman, now you go.
It's not a public hearing, okay? The, Mayor, the questions that I have, I guess the first are for the bond counsel. If the company builds a building, gets all operational, year later files bankruptcy, what happens to the revenue bonds?
If RTS were to file bankruptcy, the bond documents generally would say that the bondholders, there would be a trustee that would protect the interests of the bondholders and the trustee will hold a mortgage for the building. They would also be collecting the revenues when the, the business was a going concern. So in that event, the trustee, on behalf of the bondholders, would likely end up foreclosing on the property and trying to resell it to get money back to the bondholders. The city would not be liable for any payments to bondholders.
Okay. And then it, in that, what I have, I'm reading it, it says that in order to use these types of bonds for this type of recycling service, it has to be publicly owned. And to get around that, we're gonna keep a, a ground.
Thank you for bringing this up. So the structure of the transaction, in order to make these bonds tax-exempt, the structure of the bond issue has to have some sort of, the, the city has to have some sort of interest in the property. And so the proposal would be that RTS buys the property, provides a ground lease to city, city then leases back the facility to RTS, they build, or the land. RTS builds the facility which they own and operate and pay debt service to the trustee on behalf of the bondholders. In the ground lease, the city would be fully indemnified for anything that could possibly happen within the facility, including, you know, simple tort liability if somebody slipped and fa- fell, any sort of liability with respect to hazardous materials that might be created either in the construction of the facility or the process that they do in the facility. And any other types of liability that might arise from the facility's aberration.
Okay, so it seems to me that we're kinda creating a questionable way of making these bonds available for this purpose. And I think, I think the legislative intent of the, the law for using these types of, of bonds is for, let's say Scott County wanted to start a recycling center, or the city of Shakopee wanted to start a recycling center, that we would use these, this type of financing for this. And it kinda, kinda looks shady, actually, to have the city keep a, like a ground, a, a ground interest and lease it back to somebody else just to, to bypass that portion of the, the law.
I would ask that RTS's attorney be given the opportunity to speak to that.
I don't wanna talk to attorneys. It's, it's never, you don't get anywhere that way, they, they all think differently, they all disagree with each other and, and no two juries are the same, so.
Council Sherman.
My impression is that it's a financing tool, so it's just a different way for them to go about financing their needs to get the business off the ground. So it's just, rather than taking a bank loan or whatnot, it's a bonding process that is available, so that's my impression of it.
Mr. Mayor, member Sherman, you're, you're right, it's a, the ground lease is a financing tool.
The ground leases make the bonds available for this type of project because it's not publicly owned.
Councilmember Lehman, you're correct. And this type of deal has been done elsewhere in the state, in a couple of different locations.
Any other questions?
I have the questions for the applicant.
Okay, go for it.
I'll wait until I get up to the thing. How many other facilities do you have in operation today?
This would be the first one of its kind in, in the United States.
Okay. Track record to go off of?
Well, the, the technology that we're using is from Crown Iron Works from Minneapolis, which has been around for roughly a hundred years. And the technology is based off their oil seed extraction technology, which they literally have about a hundred thousand extraction facilities throughout the world. They actually had a facility of this kind running in northern Minnesota in the early seventies, albeit on a smaller scale. But the price of oil and the, the amount of feedstock, tear-off shingles in northern Minnesota made the project not viable, you know? So this, once oil hit the, the hundred dollars a barrel plus, they, they dusted that patent off the shelf and, and brought it out and we've worked the last six years to bring this process back to a viable position from an economic perspective. There is a pilot plant at the University of Texas that we've done several process runs through that, about four of them. So the, we've verified a lot of our, our content numbers through that means, but this would be the first plant of its kind in the U.S.
Okay, and what's the rationale for not seeking private funding?
Actually, I should just clarify that we do have financing in place. Being it is the first of its kind, it's very expensive. So this is really an alternative financing to get basically a cheaper rate to make the product more viable and more attractive for future development as well.
So would you be using dual financing tracks? I, I guess what I'm asking, would the, the private financing side be put up as a surety toward the bond payments?
No, the bond financing would probably be a refi of the original.
Okay.
Other questions? All right, thank you very much, sir. Um, all right. Do we have any other questions for staff at all? All right, I entertain a motion for seventy-three thirty-eight, resolution seventy-three thirty-eight, public hearing for issuance of solid waste revenue bonds to Recovery Technology Solutions. Council Whiting.
I'll make a motion calling for a public hearing regarding a proposed project and the issuance of revenue bonds to finance the costs thereof under Minnesota Statute, section four sixty-nine point one-five-two through four sixty-nine one-six-five-five, as amended, granting preliminary approval thereto, establishing compliance with reimbursement regulations under the Internal Revenue Code nineteen eighty-six, as amended, and taking certain and other actions with respect thereto.
Motion, you wanted?
I hope so.
So that was, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Thompson.
Just one clarification, included in the motion, I, I'm sure implicitly, but just to state it is to adopt resolution number seventy-three thirty-eight, doing what?
Thanks, sir, Council Lehman.
Aren't we not just setting a date for a public hearing?
Yes.
So why is the resolution so difficult? Doesn't this resolution just have to say September eighth is gonna be the public hearing for this application?
Because this is government.
Because it's the way it works, any other discussion? All right, seeing no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Pass unanimously. Thank you very much. All right, now we're gonna bounce back to item number ten B, ten B-one, discussion of pet shop ordinance. Chief Tate.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. For several years, the police department has responded to complaints surrounding the overall conditions of a certain pet shop in town. Each time an officer responds, they record their observations. Oftentimes, this is done in partnership with an agent from the Animal Humane Society in Golden Valley. We do this because of his extensive training, many years on the job. He is a subject matter expert and he is one of only two people who do this full-time in the state of Minnesota. The other person is also out of the Golden Valley office. Each time, the same conclusion is made. It's not ideal, it's not clean, it's definitely a frustrating process. But it is not criminal and is not risen to the level, in our estimation, where animals should be seized. These complaints intensified recently after an individual was trespassed by the store owner from his property. Now, we've all received complaints regarding this particular pet shop, asking why the city can't do more, why they can't shut it down, and why we don't license pet shops. So I'm here tonight seeking council direction as to whether or not to invest staff time and draft a, an ordinance licensing pet shops. Some cities already do. Their reasoning or view is that commercial animal establishments can present health, safety, and sanitation problems if not properly regulated. I have reviewed a handful of them, I have a few more on my desk. They vary widely in scope and detail. Some of them are, are very, very detailed, some of them would not have helped us with our particular situation. However, it is my opinion that if you never wanna see animals sold in an environment like the one we had recently, we would need to license pet shops, which would ultimately give you the authority under circum, certain circumstances to suspend or revoke that license. If directed to draft or explore this ordinance, staff would work with the animal, the agent from the Animal Humane Society in Golden Valley, determine best practices and come back for your consideration sometime, probably in September. I would recommend that we focus, again, if directed to do so, we focus narrowly on the commercial sale of animals, not getting into petting zoos, bait shops, or stores that just sell supplies and feed. With that, I'll take any questions or assume we have some people from the public that would like to speak as well.
Okay, any questions for Chief Tate before we get to the public? Council Lehman.
Chief, does the state have any requirements currently for commercial pet sales?
There are some, I would defer to our resident expert, Keith Stref, on, on that. He is the individual that's, that's accompanied us with these inspections. There are regulations, again, it was a consensus, I should emphasize this, a consensus both from our investigator that accompanied Keith and Keith that we, again, as frustrating as it, as it can be, we did not reach that threshold. Keith, you wanna speak to that a little bit?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Mr. Lehman, the answer to that question in regards to the state, the state animal welfare chapter, which falls under the criminal statutes three, four, six, and applicable subdivisions, does have language that regulates them, but they're extremely broad and they're very arbitrary. And they're open for more specialized or consistent language within municipal governments. So it's not the intent of the state to regulate pet shops that are operating in various cities across the state. Each one is unique amongst themselves and there are different issues with each city, so that's why that is as broad as it is. And that is what is contributing to the frustration and the confusion as well as the tension in this particular issue, in this particular pet shop.
Thank you, Council Whiting.
Who would inspect this in typical cities? I know you've just started looking at this, so you'd have to have somebody come out and inspect these pet shops. Would the, would there be a permit fee that would cover the cost of these inspections? And is it, does it rise to the level of veterinary inspection or is it just a cleanliness inspection?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, in the few cities that we've talked to, the code enforcement officer does a lot of just the general inspections. There are license fees. Do they cover annual inspections? Some of that's gonna be complaint-driven as well, in terms of how many inspections. I have not looked at fees in, in what each city charges for, for those licenses. In terms of the types of inspections, they, again, they range differently. I saw, I've seen one where they measure the dog tail and add twenty-five percent to figure out how much room they get in a cage and it's, they can be very, very detailed. They can be very broad, there's, I like some of the language in Bloomingtons, frankly, that deals with some of the cleanliness issues that might help us.
Okay.
But those are, again, those are the types of things we'd even, we'd look more into.
Other questions? Council Lehman.
You know, Mayor, it just seems to me that from a, from a state standpoint, or is it the Humane Society? That, that, that there would be like a standard template that would fall across all jurisdictions of the state instead of having a patchwork across all different municipalities. It almost reminds me of, you know, humans are pretty important in comparison to a animal and the seatbelt law is pretty uniform across the state. Yet we don't have uniformity in our state laws for, for the animals, and that's what I'm hearing here. My personal preference would be for the state to have uniformity across all municipalities and set up a patchwork. That would be my preference.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Lehman, that is true. But when you have a broad interpretation of statutory language, which is narrowed down to municipal language, you can't specifically put, from a statutory perspective, all the uniqueness of each individual city that a pet shop may be operating out of. But the state of Minnesota does have a standard, and to make a point off of Chief Tate's comment in regards to the, the language within individual ordinances, each city is unique amongst how you wanna set up that, set up that inspection process, by whom, how tight you wanna run it, how conservative, however you wanna do that, is a simple maneuver by, by municipal language. So I've known, I cover the southern half of the state and have many, many different pet shops and municipalities and this issue or this controversy is not unique to the city of Shakopee at all. There's a lot of cities that have very similar conflicts and it's largely due to a lack of specificity of how they want live animal pet shops be run in their individual city. And this is a classic example of that.
So one last question, Mayor. You toured this site, you found no violations?
There are no criminal violations that would rise to a standard that would require some type of criminal intervention. And that, therein lies the conflict because it's a semi-civil, semi-criminal issue. Because there's no regulatory language within an ordinance that allows the city to supervise or regulate them through a licensing process, it automatically defaults to the state statute application. And basically, that is just minimum requirements. Animals have to have food, water, you know, proper lighting, proper ventilation, and proper sanitary maintenance. And that's within an arbitrary interpretation by city officials or by our organization, myself, or whomever. And we can correct and continue to, to try and get him to meet those standards that will wax and wane, but we can't leverage or regulate his day-to-day business practice. So even if he were to violate a, an individual state statute, he could be dinged on that violation, but tomorrow he's back at it or next week or ba- next month. And then he has to go back in and start that process over. Whereas a regula- regulatory language by a city will allow them to leverage his license to continue practicing this type of behavior if he doesn't correct it. And then you suspend the license, so it's similar to a liquor establishment. If the liquor establishment continues to serve liquor to a minor and two or three or four times, eventually the police department's gonna come in front of the council and say, "We've done what we could to correct this, this individual isn't figuring it out." And then you hit him where it hurts, and that's suspending his license while he attempts to convince the council to reissue it. And that costs him per day and that's a significant incentive not to violate those municipal ordinances, more so than what the state just says.
So the animals' lives weren't in jeopardy because you didn't find that in your inspection. So now we, we were talking about the perception of individuals. One individual may seem that these animals weren't cared for good enough. One individual may seem that these animals weren't cared for good enough for that individual. Another individual may say it's near good enough. And another individual might say it's got the sanitary requirements, the ventilation requirements, so it's being fed, so it meets the basic requirements. So now we're to an individual perception situation, and we're being asked to legislate individual perception. Wow. That's amazing.
I don't understand what you're saying right there. We do this with everything. I mean, we, as a body, decide what should happen with standards for, like, the example you brought up with selling alcohol and things like that, that's what we do.
Well, we could say we want to make sure the animals are fed. We want to make sure that they're sanitary, that the ventilation is adequate. All the things that are already required. But I don't think it's proper to say we want, you know, the cages, they have disco lights on Friday night and steak and lobster on Thursday night, and so on and so forth. I mean, at some point, you're being extreme. If it's the animal welfare that we're really after, I believe what you're looking for in your inspection covers that already.
Do you feel that's true, Mr. Streff?
That has been the case in individual cases where we've inspected that particular store. But obviously, there are standards that wax and wane, and that's what's creating this controversy. The store has a distinct odor. It's, the sanitary maintenance doesn't meet the standards of the pet store environment as we know them today. Ventilational wax and wane, its power was out, so that obviously retracts on ventilation. But these are small, individual circumstances that wouldn't rise to criminal violation, but we have no tools in which to use to get them, to correct them.
I have a question for the chief. With regard to the inspections that happen, how are those paid for? And how is it decided to have them, and how often they happen, and those types of things?
Are you referring to the inspections that we currently have been doing?
Yeah, with Humane Society and that kind of thing.
It depends on when we get calls. Over the years, we probably get one every couple months. We get a complaint. Sometimes they would come into Keith's office. He works with a specific investigator. We try and have the same person go out and do the inspections for consistency. He's an animal lover, and so I trust his judgment. And it's just like anything else. We'll go, we'll inspect the store. I will say this, we've never been turned away. In fact, maybe a week and a half ago or so, Keith and I were even led into this individual's upstairs, where he does reside in the place. He didn't have to do that. He has always let us do whatever, kind of have carte blanche, frankly. And we've made several suggestions. I don't want to pretend this hasn't been extremely frustrating. It has, the fact that we keep going back to the same location and you keep getting the same types of complaints. If we want to make it go away permanently, we need something with a little more teeth. If that's your direction, we can explore how best, because we have, we have, while this is common in other cities, I mean, this is an anomaly here in Shakopee in terms of the pet store. We have some kind of benchmark where we can work from, in terms of what works. I mean, some of the complaints will not be satisfied with an ordinance in terms of like fish allergy and things like that, but based on language I've seen. But in terms of who pays for it, it's handled just like any other call for service.
Okay.
Right now.
Thank you. Counselor Whiting, I interrupted.
Chief, I'm led to believe that this particular store, the situation has been remedied. And are we sure that it won't become a pet store again through this owner?
I visited with the individual today. I don't know for sure if it'll ever be a sell animals again. I know there's been a lot of talk about it, agreement, I haven't read it. Frankly, I don't care to read it. I think that's a civil matter between he and the federated Humane Society. What he, I can tell you what he told me, and that is he's looking at just supplies.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions? All right, I know there's some folks in the audience who would like to speak. If we could just have a couple and keep it limited to five minutes at the most? You got it down there. Name and address.
Tanya Richter, 126 Little Street. Compassion is the understanding or empathy for the suffering of others. The Animals and Eagle Pet Center were left to suffer for many years, not because there was a lack of people tried to speak up for what they felt was right, but because the city was left with their hands tied due to the lack of ordinances in place to protect these defenseless animals.
Ms. Richter, could you grab the microphone and toss it closer? There you go, thank you.
Do I have to start all over?
No, you're good, you're good, you're on a roll, sorry to interrupt.
I stand before you today with the request to set guidelines for anyone who wishes to conduct the sale of animals, so that this type of treatment will never be tolerated now or ever again. I spent many hours reading the horror stories being sent to me on the Facebook page, which I created. It made me reflect on my own experiences in the store and how a child would feel going into a place like this. What are we teaching our children? Are we teaching them that it's okay to simply let things like this happen? Or that it's okay to treat a living being this way? As adults, it's our job to carve out the future and set an example to those around us. Putting new ordinances in place is a step in the right direction. I strongly encourage you to include all animals in these ordinances. To some, a rat may just be a rat, but to others, this is a domesticated pet. All animals sold in pet stores are, in fact, domesticated breeds. They rely solely on those who care for them for their food, water, shelter, medical care, and safety. While cats and dogs are the most common domesticated pets, I ask that you set a standard of care and treatment for every pet, even fish. This decision is not only about animal safety. If animals are left in unhygienic conditions, they are more likely to contract diseases that could spread to the adoptive families and their children. I request that you make specific guidelines in regards to access to food, water, cleanliness, air quality, facility conditions, medical care, temperature control, space, and basic necessities such as bedding and exercise. These are not unreasonable requests. They can very easily be implemented. I'm very grateful that Eagle Pet Center no longer has animals, but it took the dedication of over 6,000 people on Facebook to accomplish this. Why should it have to be so hard? I have another option, which I feel the city should consider as well, which would eliminate having these types of issues from ever happening again. This would be to create a policy that states that animals who are supplied from breeding facilities cannot be sold. I know you must be aware of the unhappiness people feel with puppy mill dogs at Petland, which I will not get into at this time. My point is that you have options. You have the opportunity to make changes and make a difference. It's just a matter of doing it and doing it right. I urge you to dig deep into your hearts and find the compassion that I know that you all have within you and let it be your guide. I thank you for taking the time to hear these concerns, and I look forward to a more animal-friendly Shakopee.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor and councilpeople, I'd like to kind of briefly go over a email that I had sent to one of the people at the city.
Could you introduce yourself and address?
Yes, it's Kathy Stafford, 2328 Eagle Creek Boulevard, Shakopee, Minnesota. On December 31st of 2011, with my grandchildren, I went into the Eagle Creek Pet Store. Subsequently, I ended up getting very sick with a bacterial infection due to the mice and rat feces and urine that was in the store. My husband, daughter, and grandchildren and myself had observed rats, mice, going in and out of the walls of the store. The animal cages were filthy and the animals are ill-cared for. I did see mice eating out of open bags of feed that had been placed on the floors for them, and then go into the walls when we came near them. There had been a leak in the ceiling of the store and it had black mold on the ceiling. According to the State Health Department, this is all health hazards to people. I'm very allergic to mold, dust, et cetera, and due to me going into the store, I ended up with three doctor visits and six different medications, plus two antibiotic shots. The mice and the rats that were running around the store were not controlled. They were living in the walls. If they are there, they are possibly going into turtles and to Arnie's walls. How can this be ignored? As we stated to you while we were, while I was talking to the individual, I had called the city of Shakopee. I had talked to someone there. I was told I'd get a call back. I never got a call back. I then called to the Humane Society regarding the neglect of the animals. They could not do anything but advise the owner to clean up the place. His legislation for rodents is different than that for dogs and cats, et cetera. Most of these animals in there are called feeder animals. They were there for the purpose of feeding snakes. The cages were so dirty that I could not even see that there, until we went up close, that there were rabbits in some of these cages. It was so dark in there. The smell was so atrocious when I came in that I wanted to leave. I had to cover my face and my mouth because of the smell. At that time, my grandson, who was 11 or 12 at the time, took pictures with his cellphone. And several months later, we purchased a bird from there, not because we wanted the bird, but because it was in a cage with no perch, no food, no water, with a broken foot left in there to die. It lived about three weeks. We had to have it euthanized by an aviary vet who had had experience with other animals from this same pet store. That, they said that the conditions that they were seeing from this pet store were atrocious. Like I said, I talked to the Humane Society. Scott County could not do anything and advised me to call the city because they said they are the ones that license businesses. The city never responded to any of my calls, and after about two months, I just kind of gave up on everything. I called everyone. The State Health Department suggested. I'd been told by others that this man had been grandfathered in and was basically, the store was being ignored. The health issues were ignored. All that anyone had to do, and this is what I expressed to the city, was look in the front window of the store. It was littered with mouse and rat feces and urine, which is a health hazard, let alone the black mold, the dirt, the obvious little critters running loose. While I know that many issues are here for the city to deal with, I want you to be aware that this store and the horrible conditions are not acceptable for a Shakopee business, and not acceptable for any animal. If you have a pet, I don't care. I've had, my children have had pet rats, they've had pet mice, they've had fish, they've had cats, dogs, horses. We treat them like part of our family. And whether these were feeder animals or what, they should have been treated better and the health conditions for anyone. I should not have had to experience this and become physically ill and go through all of this. So I urge you to look into this matter and make Shakopee a better place to have animals and to sell animals. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Megan with Main Street Vet, 536 East First Avenue. And we've talked about the hazards of Eagle Pet Center and what needs to be done. I'm here to talk about how to proceed. While there are state laws on the books, they certainly weren't effective in this situation, despite the clear-cut neglect and cruelty that happened in this case. Obviously, the threshold for the state isn't high enough, or it's just, it's not good. This is at a point where it is not a matter of if an ordinance needs to be drafted, it's a matter of when. There are many very good reasons to get this done. The welfare of domesticated pets who are at the mercy of humans is one. They depend on us for their food, their water, and for help when they are ill. Without those things, they suffer horribly and die, as was the fate of many of the animals at Eagle Pet Center. Public health is another serious concern. The mold, lice, the feces, and the urine-soaked bedding. Many of the animals that were forced to live in at Eagle Pet Center were a hazard to the health of animals and people, as this woman just testified. That should not and cannot happen in the future anywhere. Taking a stand to help animals is a good start in salvaging what's left of Shakopee's reputation, since this has been all over the news and people statewide are aware of this now due to Facebook and, you know, the internet, basically. You have an opportunity to come out of what some view as the Dark Ages with regards to what happened at Eagle Pet Center and create a new reputation of a progressive city that is good to animals, their small businesses, and the people that live here. The ordinance I have in mind is far from labor-intensive. Tanya and I are willing to volunteer our time, do the necessary research, and bring the best of existing ordinances to the table. I believe it is imperative to include a commercially-bred pet sales ban into the ordinance. Thirty-four cities have already done this, including three of the largest cities in the country, Los Angeles and San Diego, California, Austin, Texas, and Albuquerque, New Mexico, to name a few. If these highly populated cities can effectively implement this, then it should be fairly simple for a small city like Shakopee to do the same. This is good for the community. Less animals being produced and sold means more homes for shelter animals who often end up being killed because there just aren't enough homes for them. This reduces the financial and emotional toll that shelters and private rescues face every day. Commercially-bred animals are presented in the shops as healthy, but time and time again, they become ill after they are brought home. This then immediately becomes a consumer fraud issue because people are expecting healthy animals, and that's not what they're getting. And these unsuspecting folks are often financially drained from vet bills they never should have had. When they cannot afford expensive care, these same dogs are surrendered to rescues and shelters. 25 percent of dogs entering local shelters are purebred. Most are coming from mill situations. Petland is notorious for selling mill animals, is an excellent reason to include this provision in the ordinance. Animal Planet did a scathing documentary about them that shows many of these dogs in even worse conditions than the animals that were at Eagle Pet Center. Chuck and Don's and PetSmart are just two of the large chain stores that have been quite successful in partnering with rescue groups rather than selling animals from mills. They have not been put out of business using the adoption model, and the fact is that the animals adopted, which is a one-time transaction, while they all still need food and supplies, and that can go on for years and years and years. I can testify to. This provision would also not prevent somebody from buying from a small hobby breeder, for example, if they did feel they wanted a purebred animal. A well-thought-out ordinance that's put in place is good for the animals. It's good for the small businesses, good for the people, and it's good for the city of Shakopee. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, and I also brought two examples of ordinances that were put in place by the city of Los Angeles and San Diego, and a list of most of the cities that have put this ban into place. May I present that to you?
Yeah, give it to the chief. It's a perfect place.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else like to speak?
Mayor, give me the definition of mill-bred animals, will ya?
Megan? Megan, could you give us, Counselor Lehman asked what mill-bred animals would be. Could you come up to the mic?
Mill-bred animals are animals that are, usually come from Missouri. That's one of the biggest producers of, where most of the puppy mills are, down in Missouri. If you can find the documentary on Petland, I urge everybody to look at it. Because what happens is these, you've got females that are just bred and bred. They just, it is literally like a mill. They just continue over and over and over to produce puppies. Often, they're left in wire cages. Imagine walking on that for your entire life. They never get out, they're never socialized. It's no life for a dog. If they were, if people were to do this to humans, they'd be in jail for a million years. It's just a miserable, miserable existence. Oftentimes, there's a million of them that are in pole barns, all kinds of places like that. I've seen mills before.
So it's typically dogs?
Huh?
Typically dogs?
Typically dogs. Sometimes cats, sometimes rabbits, um, ferrets too.
Rabbits tend to have a natural propensity to reproduce quite a bit on your own.
That's what they say, but I know there is a shortage of rabbit pet food, so maybe not so much. And I'm sure that you can expand on puppy mills as well.
Thank you very much. Mr. Streff, would you like to expand on puppy mills as well, or are you?
I'll answer whatever questions that you have.
Anywhere in the state have any puppy mill, uh, restrictions in the state of Minnesota? If they do or if they don't, is that, what do you think about that?
Yeah, I might back up first just to, um, try and give a broader perspective of puppy mill there. A puppy mill is a coined term for basically a commercial breeder. So, any commercial breeder that mass produces animals for resale, um, is considered by the, the pet-owning public, or certainly the, uh, the, the pet lovers of the, of the country, a puppy mill. But a puppy mill can be just about anything as well. If you've got, uh, two females and you produce two or three litters a year, some people will think that's, say, a puppy mill. You know, somebody that has a hundred and fifty to two hundred to five hundred breeding bitches, that's producing hundreds and sometimes thousands of puppies, people will consider that as a puppy mill, and then all the in-between. I, just to humor you, I've had complaints on Ron Shera and, uh, the dog Raven that we've all heard of and love, and he raises a litter every year and donates for a significant amount of money to a charitable organization on the sale of those pups. And every time that happens, I get complaints accusing him of a puppy mill. So, there's a broad, uh, spectrum, but the puppy mills, as most rational individuals look at them, are brutal, um, terrible environments that is in the business strictly for, uh, profit, and it's at the expense of these animals. And that animal is bred repetitively until she can no longer produce, and then they will kill that female and replace her with her last-born female, and that pattern develops over and over and over again. Thus the term puppy mill.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Tapke and the City Council. My name is Agatha Smolecki, and I'm actually a resident of Eagan. Um, but I've been doing animal welfare work for the last fifteen years. Um, and I support Minnesota Voters for Animal Protection. I know the folks who started that, and I have some information here. Um, they try to pass laws at the state level, um, including laws against the puppy mills, um, wolf hunting, other types of, um, issues. And just as a concerned citizen, I just went to this, um, pet store because I had seen the Facebook, uh, information, and this is my first time meeting the folks at Rough Start. I've just watched what they've done. I've also seen, uh, comments on the internet posted about these, the horrible conditions of this pet store that dated back to two thousand and ten or earlier. So I thought, well, I'm just gonna go down to Shakopee. I, you know, I haven't been here in a while. I think it's a beautiful city. And I just walked through the store, and I observed, like some of the previous folks said, just filthy cages, um, animals sitting in their own urine, um, no fresh water, just really inhumane conditions. And I am concerned as a nurse about public health for children and adults who go through that store. But also, I feel that, you know, with animals, it's not that can they reason or not, can they hold a discussion, is can they feel suffering? Can they feel pain? And what's our responsibility as human beings who have the power to protect them? And so, I really, uh, encourage the passing of some type of ordinance, uh, because like Keith had said, people don't change their behavior unless they're hit in the checkbook with money, you know? And I'd be glad to talk to my contacts at Minnesota Voters for Animal Protection to help with providing resources to write, um, legislation. Um, I know all the folks who started it. I'm an active supporter, and, you know, I'm here to offer my support, um, as someone from Eagan who really values, uh, Minnesota. And I know that a lot of people in Minnesota have the same concerns but don't know how to voice it regarding animal issues. So I appreciate, um, you giving me the time to talk.
Thank you. All right, anyone else?
Mayor members of the council, my name is Jordan Olson. I live at two four nine Mound Street. I would like to, uh, say a few things regarding, um, this idea of creating a pet store. First of all, I've seen the, the work that this, uh, young woman has done on Facebook, and, and I read the, pretty much the whole page myself. Uh, I think it's kind of unfortunate that, uh, these animals were put into this kind of condition. However, uh, he has been cooperative with our police force, uh, and has basically done everything that's been asked of him. I've even, I, as I understand it, he's even now surrendered the animals. So, uh, it seems to me that common sense would tell me that this problem is kind of taking care of itself. This lady just said here about, uh, once you hit someone in the pocketbook, there's, you know, more likely to change their behavior. Well, I'm pretty sure between K-11 News, Fox Nine News, six thousand people on Facebook, and probably a lot of angry phone calls, he is gonna have a pretty good incentive to change his behavior. Now, with regards to the treatment of animals, I've always been a cat person myself. Uh, uh, what are we gonna do? Tell people they can't have their animals on a ninety-degree day? You know, do they have to have their air conditioning on in their house, or where are we gonna take this? Uh, how far will it go? Uh, I'm just very weary of passing an ordinance when the problem seems to have taken care of itself. Anything from council on that?
Not yet.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, um, well, I would like to, uh, decide tonight. Oh, yes.
Just to touch on that subject, this problem in particular may have been resolved now, but that doesn't prevent future issues from arising, so, that's all.
Thank you. Yes, that's exactly what I was gonna say, is that, uh, that I would like to, uh, personally, um, would like to have something in place as a city that would, uh, not allow, uh, the type of, uh, the level of care that was happening for the animals at, uh, Eagle Pet Center to happen again. I am of the opinion that what was happening in there was not, um, of the standard of care that I personally would like to see. Um, for, especially for pet stores, what people do in their homes, um, is their, their choice. But in, uh, stores where we're selling to the public, I think that we have, uh, a, a reason to care about that as a city and as a council. And, um, so what I'd like to do is talk about, A, do we as a council want to do anything? Um, and give direction to, to staff to look into, um, what we, what we do next, um, and then if we do, as a council, uh, want to have any type of ordinances or talk about this into the future, what threshold would we like that to be in and give, uh, staff general direction if that is the way we'd want to go, so. Councilor Lehman?
Is there a conditional use permit process, um, in place for this type of business?
Councilor Lehman, members of the council, and members of the audience, under Shakopee's zoning ordinance, this is by definition of a retail use. The product is sold directly to the end consumer. There is no conditional or other special use that's required for it.
Second comment, Mayor, would be...
Yes, sir.
I'm not really... I don't agree with your personal perception of what, what you wanna see as the benchmark of, for what I'm looking for. Matter of fact, I'm not looking for what I wanna see as the benchmark. I'm looking for what individuals like him tell me should be the benchmark. Because he's the expert, and I'm not. And I'm not sure how we get to the point of saying your, your glass on your aquarium has to be this clean, and how we gauge that. So I don't know if that's, I'm not really looking for that. I guess I, what I'm looking for is the, the protection of the health of the animal and the patrons in the store. So, I mean, you're gonna have algae on the glass, you're gonna have animals that have kicked their food all over. You're gonna have these things. It's just the way it is, but I think I'm more apt to be looking at just the overall health of the animal and the atmosphere. Not to nitpick and try to gauge based on individual perception.
I agree with everything you just said right there, one hundred percent. So I'm not sure what we said that was different.
I don't know how to get to that, but I, I'm gonna lean on...
Councilor Whiting?
Somebody else. You know, when I first heard some of the complaints and things, I, I guess I was aware of the appalling conditions down there, and I just chose not to go in there. And now that we think that the issue is, is taking care of itself, I'm almost concerned that we don't do an ordinance because it just adds another layer. Having said that, there, there is a certain level that you need to maintain, and it, and many times, ordinances are created because of one issue or one person that caused it. So, I think it, it would be good to maybe take a look at some of the ordinances that are out there, and, and, uh, this group has already, uh, offered their time to help out with that. I don't know that I'd wanna go into the complete medical veterinary inspection. Sorry, Dr. Ron.
Hold on, hold on, just a second. Let's...
I would be, uh, I would like to see some ordinances and then decide on a specific ordinance, you know, or plan of action.
Okay. Uh, Councilor Clay?
Yeah?
Did you have anything you wanted to add?
I didn't see anything yet.
All right, Councilor Sherman?
Um, I'm kind of on the fence with it, but I think it's worthy of further discussion, um, just based on what we've heard tonight and what we've seen the past few weeks. Um, I, my only, um, hesitation is in just creating more regulation that we're having to administrate. So, gotta weigh in the two.
I agree with you.
Councilor Clay?
Yeah, I'm thinking, at this point, why don't we direct staff to, you know, research pet shop ordinances and initially come back to us with, for discussion as to how, what kind of range of options do we have available to, to us as far as, you know, a very simple, generalized ordinance, as, or to the other extreme of, you know, everything spelled out right to the last degree. You know, give us an idea of, you know, just how big that range is, and maybe we can discuss and see where we might feel comfortable fitting in before we ask them to proceed further to, with an actual ordinance to bring back for us to look at.
Okay. I'm gonna let Dr. Gaskin get in here real quick. Come up to the mic. You know, you have to sign in, address. It's not your first time here.
I bet he wants some variants.
Don't get him started.
Don't start.
I'm Dr. Ron Gaskin. I own and operate Main Street Veterinary Service down at five thirty-six East First Avenue in Shakopee, Minnesota. I just wanna point out that you already have a precedent in Shakopee city ordinances by requiring all veterinary services in this city to be under a conditional use permit, no matter what zoning they're in. And if we're gonna be kept on a short leash with, um, doctorate degree operating a veterinary clinic, I don't see how we had oversight to ever allow pet stores not to be licensed. That's my two cents.
Thank you, sir.
And by the way, if you need some veterinary medical input from somebody with thirty years' experience and an eight-year degree, I'd be more than willing to help out.
Thank you, sir. We know where to find you. Do you have anything new to add?
Yes, yes, I do.
Make it quick, please.
Um, yeah, I also, I also just wanted to, um, touch on the fact that, uh, that man lives in that building. You know, it's acceptable for a human being to live there. Um, and I don't know if he's physically ill or not, but he does live in the building.
Let me get it clear that, um, all right, we're not gonna get into that.
Lives right there.
Uh, let me make it clear that from my perspective and my opinion, this is not, anything that we do will not be specific to the pet store that started this issue. It will be what is best for the city and animals being sold in a pet store moving forward. It doesn't, um, the issue, for the most part, has been resolved that came up, and so whatever we do moving forward will not be targeted or specified toward a specific business by any means. It will be what is best for the city going forward, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Lehman?
Mayor, not only looking at, uh, various ordinance as suggested by council members, but I am concerned that we're gonna get over-regulative, and I, I would really like to encourage our chief to, to use the services of the, this gentleman here. I didn't get your name.
Mr. Streff.
Mr. Streff, because, uh, what I'm looking for is just to make sure that the animal's health is good, and that, you know, if people walking into a store aren't getting sick or something like that. I'm not looking for micromanagement and so on and so forth. He's got his hand up. So, from that perspective, that, that's kind of where I'm going with what I would support. I'm not gonna, I wouldn't be supportive of a total overhaul, micromanaging system of how clean your windows are or something like that. I just can't, I just can't imagine how you can allow half of the households in America to not have air conditioning and central air and have pets and then turn around and complain because this store does not or does. It's like the animals are, are living in multiple environments throughout society in general, and the animals actually can take it better than we can. So, there's some things I just think are, are pet little peeves of individuals that they wanna see which aren't necessarily in the best interest of the animal. It's just that they think it is because it's good for them, and it's not for the animal, and they, they don't understand that, and they make it a bigger issue than what it is. And people like this individual happen to know what is good for the animal and what is good, you know? And that's why I'd like to use his services for that. He's got his hand up over there, too.
Hey.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council and members of the audience, I just wanna note one thing for you before you provide direction to Chief Tate and the rest of staff. Um, you've touched upon in this discussion in the comments, A, zoning approach through a CUP and a licensing approach, and I will offer for your consideration, because this is not the first time I've reviewed ordinances related to pet shops in my tenure here, that the problem with the CUP approach is that runs with the land. So if you have a user that goes away and someone supplants them but doesn't take the kind of care you're looking for, you don't have a mechanism by which to rapidly enforce. That's why most of the ordinances I've looked at recently and over my tenure here take a licensing approach because you've got an immediate way of shutting down that business if they're not in compliance with the license. So, that's something certainly the chief and staff would take a look at, but I think you ought to have that in mind as we move forward.
Thank you. Yeah, that was the question I was gonna ask, was that whether a, since the issue is the, the specific business is currently taken care of, um, if we could move forward with the zoning approach or licensing, if we have to go to a licensing approach in order to get what we need out of it, um, so basically, a zoning approach would not be successful, is what you're saying?
It seems to me it would not be the most successful approach. You could still end up with a similar problem if you had a granted CUP and someone bought the business and operated it differently than at the beginning of that CUP.
I see what you're saying. Okay, got it. Chief?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I think I have a good feel. We can bring something back probably, uh, late September.
Okay.
Somewhere in the early October timeframe.
Could you do an awesome job of summarizing what you think? Just so everyone's clear?
I anticipate, uh, reviewing several more ordinances and, and bringing language that, uh, I think will be palatable for, for you, the policymakers, that, uh, will be an option for licensing pet shops. I will try and keep it as, as simple and, and, uh, I know these issues aren't always black and white, and there's a lot of emotion involved, but I'll, I'll, we'll come back with something that's been working in other cities, and, uh, we'll have that discussion later this fall.
Thank you. Is that cleared, everyone on council? Will we go to that? All right, all na, hot, all heads are nodding, if I could speak. All right, thank you very much, sir. Thank you, everyone who, uh, spoke on behalf of the issue tonight, and Mr. Streff, thank you for being here.
Can we take a short break?
Uh, sure, we can take a short break.
Five-minute recess.
Say?
Was that a motion?
Yes.
Five-minute recess, second by Councilor Clay. Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passage your names. We are in recess for five minutes. Be back at nine fifteen. All right, we're gonna pull the meeting back together here, so if folks wanna keep talking, please go out in the lobby. Thank you, everyone. All right, we'll reconvene the meeting. Thank you very much. We reconvene the meeting and moving on to item number ten D one, elected official salaries for twenty fourteen fifteen. Ms. Wilson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. The item before you tonight is something that you have the opportunity to act on once every two years, and that is the setting of salaries for elected officials. State law requires that any changes to elected official compensation be enacted prior to, um, the election day and not take effect until the beginning of the new terms of the individuals that were elected at that election. So between now and election day, you could choose to act on elected official salaries and make changes to those. Any changes you do enact will be effective January one, twenty fourteen. The, currently, the city pays the mayor an annual salary of seven thousand eight hundred and fifty-four dollars and city council members are paid six thousand seven hundred and fifteen dollars. The last time elected official salaries were increased was January first, two thousand and sixth. So as we get to the end of twenty thirteen, these salary amounts will have been in place for eight years. So, um, we bring it forward not with a particular recommendation tonight, but with some data from comparable cities, other metro area cities of similar population to ours. Um, in your memo, you found a couple of different attachments that gave you what the averages would be looking at it several different ways. Attachment A provided a list of, um, all the metro area cities with a population over twenty thousand, and I have the salary data for, um, everybody over thirty thousand in population. And then, um, attachment B is a group of ten cities that the city has used to um, determine average salaries for our full-time employee positions. Um, several of those include our immediate neighbors of Prior Lake, Chanhas, and Chaska, and Savage, as well as other cities experiencing the growth and development patterns that Shakopee's been experiencing in recent years. And last but not least, I included attachment C, which shows the percentage wage increase that, um, s- non-union city employees have received each of the years since elected officials last received an increase. So if y- uh, the council had applied to itself the same pay increases that have been granted to non-union employees, um, you would be at, uh, eight thousand nine hundred and thirty for mayor, seven thousand six hundred and thirty-five for city council standing here today. So I'm looking for some direction from the council if there is a desire on the part of a majority to see an increase in elected official wages. What, um, either a flat dollar amount that you'd like to see or a calculation or a process that you think is a reasonable and fair calculation. We will do the math, provide you with the exact dollar amounts in the form of a resolution at your next meeting.
Thank you. Comments? Counsel Lehman?
Does, uh, Councilmember Whiting and myself have to, like, we got a financial conflict in this issue?
It's kinda funny you get to vote on your own raise, you know?
Uh, Ms. Mayor, no. Only people that can vote on the raises are you and whether you're up for election or not up for election. It doesn't, does not matter.
Okay. Thought I'd get that out of the way right away. There you go. Very good. So thoughts? Counsel Sherman?
Um, my opinion is that it's not necessary to make a change to the compensation that's currently in place. These positions are not a career. They're, um, public service and the salaries that are in place, I think, are fair in terms of compensating for time. And the efforts put forth by people on the council and in these positions. So that's my perspective.
Thank you. Other thoughts? Counsel Clay?
We only do this about every eight or ten years. You know, it's, I, uh, I wish we, well, we'd just set a number and then have it be adjusted at the whatever, you know, the other employees' adjustments are from one year to the next, but, uh, that's probably not gonna happen. I would, uh, I would recommend keeping it simple, just say we change the salary from ten thousand for the mayor and eight thousand for ci- city council, which is a little bit above the average of all the cities that are closest in size to us. But that's also taking into account that it's probably gonna be another eight or ten years before it changes again. So, you know, it'll catch up to the average soon enough.
I would be comfortable with that, uh, range.
Counsel Lehman?
I'm with Pamela, so that makes you the tiebreaker. I don't, I think, uh, I think the the, what we're paying currently is fine and I think, uh, the 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 private, the private population isn't seeing pay increases like we were showing two percent, three percent every year. That's just hasn't, hasn't happened over the last few years. So I, I don't think it's justified at this point.
Got it. Um, well, I'm not exactly the tiebreaker, um, because I think it, uh, my theory on this is what I would like to see, not for any of the five of us sitting up here at all, but what I would like to see in the future for the city. Um, so after we're all gone, I would like to see positions that are paid, um, to by no means compensate people for their time, but at least make up for them to be able to. So Matt, you, for example, um, have enough salary in there to make up for you to leave your shot for half a day or see for you to take a half a day of unpaid leave to go to trainings and meetings and conferences and things like that and have enough, because I think that, I mean, I knew exactly what I was getting into when I ran for mayor. Um, I'm self-employed, so I can work at two o'clock in the morning and that's fine with me. It's not necessarily fine with my wife, but it's fine with me. And, um, I think that we should have, uh, especially the mayor position with the size of community that we are moving forward, be, um, enough compensation to incentivize, not incentivize, to make it attractive for business people and for other folks to run for mayor and to be caretakers of the city into the future without it negatively impacting their ability to pay their mortgage, um, and to pay their bills and those kinds of things. So I don't think, I I think that the pay levels for, um, where it's at right now, uh, both for council and mayor, um, don't necessarily allow council members and mayor to go to trainings and conferences and those kinds of things, and I want everybody to go to those kinds of things. I think it's important to get out and see what other cities are doing and get out and see where it's going and have the expectation set up that, um, that you can and should be attending those kinds of things. Um, and I think it's im- important to do that, um, and will help Shakopee into the future, um, 'cause I'm spending a significant amount of time, not that I have to, but with everything that's going on right now with projects and, I mean, I spent five hours today meeting with Data Card and doing other things that are mayor gigs and it wouldn't that are helping to get things done for the city, that people want to talk and that kinda thing. So I don't know, I don't know where it should be, but I think it should be enough and it should be raised enough to make it at least attractive for folks who are not, uh, self-employed and or retired person to run for, um, mayor and specifically, but also council seats. Does that make sense to what I'm asking for?
Except for the last part.
What do you mean?
What was that, the last part about retired people, what?
I mean, if you look at, uh, the history of who has run for mayor in Shakopee, the last, at least the last eight years, it's all been self-employed or someone who was retired. And I don't know if, and and the reason it's that is because you can't take enough time off to get to be mayor unless you are one of those two things, and it's a daytime position. Um, the the meetings happen during the day and and that's the way it is. Um, and so we can, I would rather have a mayor who can attend those kinds of things, but it doesn't negatively, significantly negatively impact their ability to have a living.
I would suggest twenty thousand for mayor and and eight thousand for council, but then there'll be ten more people signing up to run for mayor tomorrow.
I don't mind that at all. No, and and that's what I'm saying. I was trying to get this out of the realm of just being me. Um, i- it's not about me and I don't intend for it to be about me. I'm I'm looking at what I would like to see into the future for the city as someone who, um, has the ability to do these things and council members and mayor, they don't need to accept the pay, correct? Jim?
Uh, Ms. Mayor, members of council, that's kind of an age-old question, and the answer is yes, you have to accept the pay. Some, um, elected officials then choose to donate money back to the city. Some um elected officials then choose to donate money back to the city. Do it that way.
Right.
One thought, uh, just a thought. Um, uh, however the council decides to go on this, it, it's true that. You have to adopt this before the next election and make it effective after the election. But that doesn't mean you have to put it in place January first, two thousand thirteen. You could skip a whole election cycle and adopt an ordinance now that would make the salary a certain amount effective hypothetically. January first, did I say thirteen? I meant fourteen. Yeah, January first, two thousand fourteen. You could add the ordinance effective January first, two thousand sixteen. So it would be two election cycles and I don't know whether that helps at all. It might help the concerns about.
Doesn't because you could have a future council change that. A future, you could have a council in twenty fourteen change that too. So then what's the point, you know?
That's, that's possible. Sure, somebody could come in and change it. That's true.
So Steve, you were at ten and eight?
I just threw out those numbers, yeah.
You were higher.
I, I'm not gonna throw out numbers. I'm, I'm just gonna say that it should, I'm just saying what I would like to see it at a level of. And since I'm kind of a, a different entity within the five of us, I'm not gonna say the numbers that I think it should be at. Um.
You're, you're definitely saying you work harder than we do.
Well.
But the next guy might not.
Especially you, Steve.
Yeah, that's, goes without saying.
No, but it is a significant amount of time and I think it, it should be. I mean.
This is what staff came together, came up with using what the non, non-union and. Pay structure's been. So if you're looking for a justification based on what non-union employees were awarded, it's, that's the chart right there.
Staff has recommended ten and for mayor and seventy-five hundred for council.
And I'm not sure where they came from that. Is it, is it because they're assuming mayor that, they're assuming that. We probably won't have this discussion again for a few years? I don't, I don't know how they came to that number.
Councilmember Lehman, I can tell you, I came to it from using this group of ten cities that we've traditionally used for setting employee salaries. And then um rounding it up from there a bit under the assumption that it's likely to be another six to eight to ten years before you act again. Um, and if we set them right at those dollar amounts, you're likely to be behind already again next year. So, that's where I arrived at ten thousand and seventy-five hundred.
So, that's where we're at. Is there anyone who would like to make a motion? Council Clay?
Make the motion to change council pay to seven thousand five hundred for council members and fifteen thousand for mayors.
Excuse me, Ed.
Mr. Thompson?
Mr. Mayor, uh, the, the change has to be accomplished by an ordinance. So I, just to rephrase the motion, it would be to direct staff to.
Direct staff to create an ordinance to do what I just said.
I'll second that.
All right, discussion on that. Council Sherman?
I, I just wanna say, I guess I'm just a little philosophically indifferent about this topic. I don't know, maybe it's kind of like Pollyanna or something, but I just think it's the obligation of people in society to contribute to their community and. I don't know to, to pay anymore than what it is. I just don't think it's the right thing to do.
I don't think our current pay comes anywhere near, whether it's mayor or council, comes anywhere near the time and that you. Spend not only doing, you know, these meetings, but prepping for them and. You know, how many, what's the value of how many, you know, n- nice sunny, warm Sunday afternoons have I, you know, been. Bringing a council packet or something rather than canoeing or.
Council Whiting?
Yeah, we're not in it for the pay here. I, I don't think any of us are. If, if we were, we're crazy, cause it doesn't pay. But uh, um, I, I do think you're right. You do need to look ahead and where the city's going and, and um, even if. You know, the amount of time you put in as mayor, that doesn't necessarily mean the next mayor's gonna put in that much time. But still, it's, it's gonna be a lot of time and, and it always is. So I think um, moving ahead, I don't think, you know, that wage will move in a long time. But uh, so I think we're kinda setting it up for future members.
I just get clarification. What was the mayor pay that you? Fifteen. Thank you.
Council Lehman?
It was ten and.
One five, one five.
His motion was fifteen.
Was it really?
Seven thousand five hundred for council, fifteen thousand for mayor.
Thank you.
Wow. I think that's extremely out of outrageous.
Okay. Any other comments other than that? All right, seeing no further discussion, all is in favor? Aight. Anyone opposed?
Aight.
Passes. Did you vote?
Yes, I did, yes.
Three to two. Thank you. All right, item number ten F one, uh, consideration of process to appoint interim council member. Mr. McNeil?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a follow-up of the discussion that we had at the July twenty-ninth meeting when you accepted the resignation of Pamela Sherman. She will be uh creating a vacancy on the council after August thirty-first. At that meeting, you gave me direction to contact previous people who have served on the city council over the past eight to ten years and see. If they would be willing to serve because of the four months that would be uh available as a time period. There's not a great deal of time for a learning curve. We uh had responses back from each of them. Uh, Pat Heitzman and Terry Yost both indicated their willingness to serve. Steve Mendon immediately expressed his appreciation to be considered, but he has work uh issues that are pressing. I received a call late today from Joe Hellcamp, who had initially expressed some interest in it, but upon further thought. Uh, expressed his desire to be withdrawn from consideration at this time. Therefore, that would leave Mr. Yost and Mr. Heitzman who would be available. The question for you is how you would like to go about making the selection on this. You can, one, they're both known commodities and you could choose from both of them at this time. Second, you could set up an opportunity for interviews at a regular meeting. At that point, ask them questions and make a decision then. What I would suggest in either case, however you make that decision, do that before September first, so that at the first meeting of September, which would be the third. That could be your first item of business on the council agenda that evening. They could then immediately step in and create the fi- fifth member of council for you at that time. That is what is before you. Do you have questions or comments?
Questions or comments. Council Clay?
Not a question, but I think the sooner we make a decision, the sooner that person can start prepping.
So, what does that mean?
So, what does that mean?
Got a coin.
Um, move to appoint uh Pat Heitzman.
Second.
So that was a motion to appoint Pat Hats- Heitzman to council as of uh.
September first.
Okay.
I think that's our, what date, September first?
Yeah, when are you, when are you done?
Thirty-first of August.
First of work.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Discussion on that item.
Let's not give them a key to the place, um. Just to, just to be safe.
All right. Any other discussion? All right, seeing none, all is in favor?
Aight.
Aight, anyone opposed? Passed unanimously.
I abstain.
Abstain. I forgot to say abstention again. I'm sorry. So, passes four to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. And item ten F three, discussion of Shakopee priorities for scale strategic plan.
Thank you, mayor and council. One of the items that scale does about every other year is update its strategic plan. We're going to have an opportunity to do that at its regular monthly meeting this Friday. One of the items which was directed to each city and each participating jurisdiction. Um, at a previous meeting was to come in with what you would as a group determine to be the three top priorities that you would like to see scale work. On during the next strategic planning session, which again is about every other year. I provided you with the strategic plan as adopted by scale in two thousand twelve. So that you could get some ideas as far as items that you would like to see or might possibly consider. Um, we put up what the uh current ones are. They've divided those amongst four policy uh committees and then there's also the executive committee that helps give guidance on that. The transportation economic development committee focused on transportation land use issues, uh development, economic development issues. And then analyzing the ordinances that we have within the county. The first three of those that are on the screen and in your packet are in process at this time. Certainly, we've had, I think, pretty exciting uh progress through the establishment of first stop shop. We'd certainly like to see it continue. The last item that's up there, they've looked at and I think have come to the conclusion that establishing a countywide ordinance which will affect all economic development. Was gonna be a little difficult to do. Each city is unique, each city has different priorities, so that's probably one that is not going to be pursued. The second one, the service delivery committee, that probably carries a lot of the uh heavy lifting on that one. We've looked at fire service collaboration. I know that there have been a lot of ideas in terms of, well, how can fire departments be more efficient, more effective? And that's one of the things that we looked at as Shakopee discussed how we were going to affect daytime response. One of the things that we came away from with that is that you've got part-time paid-on-call volunteer departments, you've got them spread out ge- geographically throughout the county. It just was not apparently very effective on that. One thing that is coming from that, however, is a study of a countywide template which might be used for providing fire services to the township. So that one's still in operation. The MPCAM has four rule that regards stormwater drainage. The law on that actually was adopted August first. We need to have by the end of this year. Uh, adoption of stormwater regulations and Mr. Loney is working on that. That's probably a little late for that to be a, a scale initiative. I talked about water quality uh collaboration. That's been explored, model sustainable ordinance. That has not been looked at at this time. Consolidated dispatch with Carver County, that was looked at and Carver County uh did not feel that it wanted to participate on that one. Uh, fiber optic partnerships, IT collaboration, uh collaborations, voiceover IP, those are all in process right now. And library service enhancements has been discussed in very general term, but nothing's been implemented on that. Communications and education committee, um, those are primarily the communications coordinators uh throughout each of the member cities. They talk about scale, marketing, uh countywide emergency communication, that's, that's in discussion. Updates on the scale website is in process. Social media for scale, that's something that probably can continue uh to working. And then the scale roadshow, I think they're referring to the uh five oh one uh group that, that you've seen each year. And then finally, as a regional training facility, that is just finding ways to help that grow and become more sus- uh financially self-sustaining. So those are the items that you've had over the past couple of years. Just in terms of ideas that we have, I think one of our priorities needs to be a continuation of economic development emphasis. And making certain that first stop shop can continue to work and grow. There's an opportunity to have them help us with doing, for example, business retention and expansion visits. Those are things that we can also work through the chamber of commerce to do. So that might be one I would suggest on that. The other one, which is sort of outside of what scale has traditionally done, but would be more in line with the one sixty-nine corridor coalition. Is perhaps suggesting that the one sixty-nine uh highway be looked at as a commercial corridor within Scott County. There's a couple of cities that it doesn't directly impact, but we think that everywhere from Bell Plain to Jordan to Shakopee and Prior Lake and Savage. That is a significant corridor and I think that might be something from a transportation standpoint we need to expand upon. So, those are a couple of suggestions, but I certainly am open for uh discussion from you.
Council Lehman?
There's a couple that I would like to see added. Um, after our discussion of the highway funding dilemma with the state. Four or five years out. And, and we're basically already doing it. I would like to see the Scott County Association for Leadership and Efficiency focus on them collaborative efforts of transportation. Within the county with multiple cities. Uh, and then also probably on a road maintenance aspect too.
I have no idea what that means.
Well, we do our, we collaborate with other cities when we do our seal coating to get a lower price. So, I would think when Scott County uh is looking through scales model, through the scale model to save money throughout the county. In various things they do with county roads, or even cities, when the county's doing the same process. That we could use that collaborative buying power like we do with our seal coating to save money throughout Scott County and all its cities.
Okay.
Not only from a construction standpoint of, of new or reconstruction, but also from a maintenance side.
All right. Council Whiting?
Well, those are good uh points. I think one of them that you kinda hit on was the strategic corridors in the county. And I think we need to um keep that in mind uh for future and I know they're talking about. Marshall Road seventeen being a strategic, strategic corridor. Also, you mentioned one sixty-nine as a corridor and uh enhancing that. Um, along with rail, I think uh you mentioned in the past too, that I think that needs to be looked at as, as something uh to look forward. Scale can uh try and foster a little more uh rail transit. And also the transit connections. I think our key that, try and force uh some more connections. Uh, and we're talking about that on our. Local level with uh Prior Lake and things like that, but I think through scale, we'd be able to enhance some of that. And then of course, support and enhance the first stop shop for economic development.
So Mark, are you asking just for, do you want three for each of the?
No.
Categories or just three total?
Three total.
Three total. Okay. Council Sherman?
So I'd agree with the first stop shop. So you can put another tick by that one. I think that, to me, that's probably one of the most important ones. Um, and then um, I agree with Council Lehman, what he was talking about in terms of the um. Sharing of resources and sourcing materials and um working together on larger scale maintenance projects.
Even road recons, uh, light one oh one. I mean, I, I think that's the future. We're gonna have to be working together if the state doesn't have funding.
Well, what will scale be able to provide for that, that this, that the county doesn't already do? That's my question.
What's the coordination, I guess, really, right?
Yeah, I, you know, I can't answer that. I guess that question would be best for them, their uh technical team in Scott County. Because I don't know what other cities throughout Scott County are doing, what their plans are, what their models are. And how their planning fits into, well, the one sixty-nine, I guess I know that one.
Right.
And I know how the cities all along the corridor have played a vital role in that corridor and its effect in Shakopee. So if there's other corridors that affect Shakopee throughout Scott County, that's, that's important to us.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'm wondering if, if uh road maintenance collaboration is something that we'd want to do. I'd, I'd ask uh the public works director. I know that certainly Shakopee participates in seal coating and striping and those sorts of things. Would you see that overlays and reconstruction is something that would see efficiencies by going to a collaborative effort with other cities in the county? Or are we unique in each city?
Well, we already are in a joint powers agreement with the city of Burnsville and ten other cities in the southern metro. And we have similar type of streets, you know, municipal streets where the county, county roads are different. And uh, so we're mixing the two together. We've looked at that before.
Okay.
And it didn't seem like there'd be enough savings there or wouldn't be any savings. So.
Okay.
But putting the overlays together, again, the county does a big overlay project. It might be something where we, if we could coordinate it. It might be something worth looking at, but um, we do that anyway. We, we look at that, we talk.
This is something that we could probably do. But countywide, the county might, if they're in an area like Elko Market and they're doing a small overlay, you know, we're in here doing Highway Two, let's say, and that might help them. We do such a big overlay program already that it's, I don't know if it'd help or not. But it's worth, you know, pursuing and checking out. I don't know how big of a priority it is to the whole county.
One thing that I would really like to have scale further pursue is the fire service and possibly public safety collaboration. I mean, we just spent a million bucks tonight on a new truck. And why does every city in the county need to be spending a million bucks on a new truck? So I know that there are opportunities moving forward with other cities that could possibly work in our favor with public safety.
No, it wasn't a million dollars, it was only nine hundred and some thousand.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate the correction.
Keep you honest.
Yes, nine hundred plus thousand.
Paperwork was the difference.
Most groups do that through mutual aid packs already, but.
I know, but the mutual aid packs don't really, I mean, it, we're gonna put fire stations where they're best for Shakopee, to put fire stations, not where they're necessarily best for the entire, the entire county to put fire stations. Because I mean, if that were the case, we wouldn't, I mean, Savage wouldn't have put theirs where they did. Probably wouldn't put theirs where they did. And then we'd have one that covered South Bridge for the region, and we wouldn't have to be dealing with the third station issue. I mean, the potential was there, we just didn't have the, didn't get all the way there. So and then as we grow, that's gonna be the same thing with Louisville Township and Jackson Township as we go south and west. I think that, to me, that is the number one, I'll take that back. That's the number two thing, continuing First Stop Shop, which has great legs, is huge, I think. But fire, and I would expand that to public safety, service collaboration, I think would be opportunities to really keep, I mean, the cost of that is gonna continue to go up, but we can keep that cost curve bent down a little bit if we were better able to collaborate with other cities. Councilwoman Whiting.
I just, if we get to only pick three, I don't wanna lose out on those corridors, one sixty-nine specifically.
One oh one.
Well, any of the strategic, that's why I put it, strategic corridors. If they're, if they're corridor the whole county, more than just Shakopee.
Seventeen, two eighty-two, forty-two.
I think we need to focus on them and collaborate to get those to a level that we need to be.
So what are you saying they should be?
Well, to have a scale focus on that is one of their strategic goals to enhance.
What are you saying the three should be?
Oh, well, I would say First Stop Shop, strategic corridors, and whatever we can do for transit connections, I think. I don't know how scale has ever looked at that, but I think that might be a possibility for scale.
So being the vice chair, does First Stop Shops still need to be in there as one of the priorities since it's already up and running? I mean, we all want, it's.
For a strategic goal, I think you don't wanna forget it, but I see what you're saying, is you don't really.
Right, it's moving, and it just needs to support and maintain. So is that some, are you looking for new initiatives here, or are you looking for?
There, there were no directions given, just what are the top three priorities that you would have for scale?
Maybe an adjunct to that is just not talk about one-stop shop, but also working at coordinating that county person with that, with our new employee, as well as any other, in other cities within the county. We all should be kind of working together, also with coming up with, you know, a list of criteria by which we, in the future, you know, help us judge which companies are worth supporting, which maybe aren't. But because every time we've done an abatement, it's always been in conjunction with the county doing it. But then there's, you know, a third step is that if we can't get something here, maybe Belle Plaine can, or Jordan can, or some other city within Scott County.
And that's very much already happening. The First Stop Shop is doing.
Lead over, you know, from, if we can't help them, or what maybe the next Scott County city can.
It's fairly new, though, so I think we still need to support it. And then let it grow into that economic gardening aspect of it, too.
Okay, Councilman Lehman.
I don't know, Bruce might be able to put more insight in this, but we heard about the possibility of the water quality issue coming down at a later date. Now, we can't make that a priority because we don't know if that's coming yet. But once it does come, it's gonna make itself a priority. So how do we, how do we plan for that? Because we don't know when it's gonna be implemented. I'd like to make it a priority, but if I knew it was gonna be an issue.
Right.
Next year. But I don't know if that's gonna be an issue next year.
So. Hang onto your seats.
All right.
We don't really, we know something's coming, we don't know the full impact. We do know we have to update our inventory, and that's for the rest of this year. I'll have to have a proposal for that. And then next year, we'll have to do some more of the work. But then to meet the goals of this MS four permit, they're talking about twenty-five percent reduction of phosphorus or loading in the city, you know. And we, we really have a pretty good stormwater system, but our old part of the town, old Shakopee, there wasn't any ponds thought about when that area was developed. So to reduce the loading of that area, I might need, there will be some significant costs. That's the bad news. The good news is we do have a pretty good storm drainage fund that can handle, I believe, the impacts that might be coming at us. But we really don't know the full extent. We just need, we're trying to get prepared for that. I do have a proposal that might be coming to you at the next council meeting to address that. But every city will have its own particular requirements. And how we deal with that will really be dependent on what's coming down at us. But that's not, again, it'll affect the whole county, but it'll affect more of the developed cities more than the undeveloped.
So Jay, back to what you had said were your three. I never got you to say all three again.
Well, it was the First Stop Shop, strategic corridors, and the other one had to do with transit, taking scale to a different level and starting looking at transit issues.
And my final three are gonna be legislation, because that affects everything. And it's collaborative for the countywide.
But you always vote against the scale legislative slate.
Not all of them, they've got some pretty decent.
But you vote against it, though.
No, not all of them.
All right.
I mean, some of the, some of the legislative pushes that they've came out with were okay. Then I supported them.
All right.
I actually went to, to the State House on behalf of some of them, so.
Okay.
I don't know how you get all your cities to be consistent on it. I guess that's a scale problem, you know? So maybe they can figure out what, what the most pressing legislative agenda issues are for everybody and the ones that everybody, or the majority agree on, focus on that one. That's, that would be one. I do think the roads through Scott County, especially the ones that affect Shakopee, that are key. We know there's not gonna be funding, we gotta make them a priority moving forward.
Okay.
And the idea behind that would be to seek improvements or seek funding for those?
First, you gotta identify them.
Okay.
One oh one, that's gonna be new. Marshall Road forty-two, two eighty-two, I know two eighty-two is on the docket already with Scott County. But these roads are gonna, the main ones that lead to places and get you to and from around the county, go through all the cities, the ones that affect us. And scale's gonna have to be able to figure out, moving forward, along with Scott County and the various cities. I mean, you can look at a map and say, this road takes you from here to there, to the other side of the county, through five cities. If them five cities can't do anything with that road in the next ten years, and these, this city over here is, that road still goes nowhere, because down the road, it's gonna have no funding. So how do we plan for, how do we plan for that? I mean, it would be nice if everybody was on the same page, saying, you know, Shakopee's planning to do this stretch of road in twenty fifteen, it's going this way. This other city is doing it in twenty twenty. The city in the middle here isn't planning to ever do anything with that middle section. So you're gonna have a road, not a road, and a road. Maybe you get the center section done somehow, or, you know, if everybody's on the same page and knows what the same plan is for the majors.
Mr. Mayor and Councilor, the county does have a capital improvements plan, which is longer than the cities.
Yep.
That is seven or nine years.
Ten.
Ten year now. So I think a lot of things you're talking about in terms of identification.
Okay.
Is there in place? It's a question of, for example, again, going back to the initial suggestion, you know, looking at one sixty-nine as a commercial corridor. What can be done to improve that, to carry freight? Really, I mean, it would be our section all the way from Mankato through and across the river. That's part of what the one sixty-nine coalition is doing. But that also includes rail, that also includes potentially transit to.
So now we have one oh one going up the hill to four ninety-four, which I don't think scale has ever taken up.
But that's something that Scott County and Hennepin County are working on in terms of making improvements there. There will be segments of our transportation all through the county that are identified in probably the county's capital improvements plan. But the question is, is that a focus? Should that be a strategic mission for all of scale? We think that one sixty-nine is a regional significance. The other one, yes, it's important for northern Scott County and for Shakopee.
So the capacity of one sixty-nine bridges should remain a very high priority for the scale group.
Certainly.
And the commercial corridor aspect, I think, is what I think we, I missed on my discussion. And that's key to add that is, because that does include the rail part of it. And that does affect Shakopee a lot more than others.
All right, so I have a question for you, Councilman Lehman first. So that with the planning aspect, I agree with you entirely, that that's something that has to be done completely. But I don't think that's a scale thing.
Okay.
That's a county, it happens, it's currently happening.
Yep.
With, so I don't think that's something that belongs in scale, because it's not the.
So is it a legislative issue when we talk about one sixty-nine's bridge capacity?
Yeah, we need to think more advocacy things, at least in my mind.
Okay, so that's more about.
Not the nuts and bolts.
Advocacy legislative push for that type of thing.
Right, so that gets to his strategic corridors, which that's, right? So we've got transportation, strategic corridors, First Stop Shop, continuing support First Stop Shop. And then I would like to see public safety collaboration on there. That would be a third one that I would like to see.
I agree with that one.
Anybody else agree with that one? Councilman Lehman.
Sure.
Councilman Clay. So that drops transit off of the list.
That's only gonna affect a couple of the member cities anyway. And I don't think the townships are gonna be too excited about them anyway.
Right.
It's all about the corridors looking bleak.
Can you have, can you get Cy excited about transit? I don't think Cy is gonna get there.
Worried about that.
Yeah.
And I would say transit's being addressed.
Yeah, I would say it is, too, but I don't want to lose focus on mobile scales, so.
Right, so we've got public safety service collaboration, transportation and strategic corridors, and First Stop Shop. Are we all?
Can accept that.
Yep.
Good with that?
Yep.
You understand, you clear with me, Neil?
Because either Councilor Whiting or I will be presenting this on Friday. Just make, I wanna make sure that I understand. When you talk about transportation, strategic corridor, you're looking for funding, for advocacy, for traffic movement, for what are the things?
I like the commercial corridor aspect of it, because that does throw in the rail part of it, too.
Commercial corridor, that, again, that would be unique to one sixty-nine. Are you looking?
Right, one sixty-nine.
Okay, so is the, are you looking at one of your priorities on being the one sixty-nine corridor? Is that what I'm hearing?
I would say that, but I would not lose focus of the other strategic corridors. And I don't know if we can actually, that's kind of like four, but it's almost like.
I agree with him.
I thought you meant when you said strategic corridors, the, the strategic spots where they identified for transportation economic development improvements. Weren't there like eight locations throughout the county? Is that what we're talking about?
Well, that's not what I was talking about. But the one sixty-nine commercial corridor is one sing, could be one single focus. But if you wanted to have an overarching.
To accomplish what?
To focus on the strategic corridors for the future, that you could spend money and advocate for funding.
Right, right.
But it's kind of overarching, but it would include the one sixty-nine commercial corridor.
And they all connect with each other, so if you look at it from like a large county perspective, they lay the grid work out.
So what I'm hearing then is that one sixty-nine is a commercial corridor, is the primary, but is a subset under that to make certain that there's adequate planning and advocacy for all arterials in the county. Would that be accurate?
I would say that, in my mind, yeah. You guys okay with that?
There's a lot of arterials.
I think so. What, the, with that, I would like to focus on the, were there eight, Mark? Were there eight identified?
Like, you're talking about the one sixty-nine highway forty-one.
Yeah, two eighty-two, one sixty-nine, down two eighty-two and seventeen, thirty-five in, thirty-five and two in Elko. Those strategic.
Those have already been mapped out as part of the, some of the focus points.
Right, yeah, exactly. But how do they continue to be developed and what? That's what I was talking about, I thought you were talking about with the strategy, strategic.
Mayor, I think the county, if you take the county's transportation plan, long-term transportation plan, I think that's gonna show pretty clear where the county invasions its, its key corridors moving forward. And I would just incorporate them along with one sixty-nine and some of these other eight as your, as your key corridors to make the county function in the future. We just gotta make sure we highlight the ones that happen to come through Shakopee.
Lucy, Mark?
I'm sure on Friday, you and I will come up with something.
We'll figure it out by Friday.
Beautiful.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Item eleven, councilmember reports, we'll start on this side, Council Sherman.
Yes, on Wednesday, July thirty-first, I attended the Scott Community's Transit Review Board, as did Mr. Leake. And we had a discussion about the three different entities that we've been talking about in terms of merging. So Minnesota Valley Transit Authority, Southwest Transit, and the Met Council, Met Transit. And we decided as a body to make a recommendation to the cities and to the county board to pursue further conversation and exploration of the Minnesota Valley Transit Authority, so MVTA. Out of those three discussions was our number one choice in terms of pursuing. So you'll be seeing a letter of recommendation come from that body to this body for your discussion and approval with more details. But that's, that is where we landed, so you can expect to see that pretty soon.
And why is that?
We talked a lot about, there were several kind of aspects in terms of what we reviewed. One of them was certainly the interest of that organization in partnering and their diligence and preparation in terms of answering the wide array of questions that we sent out to them prior to these meetings. The other, there's kind of that cultural aspect, and then, of course, there's a service aspect. So culture aspect just being how well can we work together with the leaders of that organization and look at who we have involved in transit? And then the service aspect, of course, what do we think that that provider could bring in terms of service to our riders? Where Minnesota Valley, as we look at this scope that they cover, we talked a lot about seventy-seven, thirty-five W, one sixty-nine, and the relationship between them. And you can clearly see it this past week, if you tried to cross the river at a time of traffic or even not. So, and, and they cover all three and have a vested interest in the south of the river rider. So Metro Transit also covers those areas, while one sixty-nine would be us, not them. But I think one of the decision points was kind of the interest in the rider that we bring to the table versus that. Um, that we bring to the table versus that. There's, there's been a lot of. I would say recently it's been pretty good with Metro Transit, but over the years, it's been mixed messaging from them. So I think there's a little bit of hesitation and concern about going into a partnership with them and thinking about. How that would work and what kind of um, voice we would have in making decisions, so. That's why we ended up on MVTA.
Wow.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any else?
Nope, that's it.
Councilman Lehman?
Gotta say thanks for your hard work on that. Um, obviously, we all did National Night Out. That was a good time last night. I didn't get wet, we got done early, well, almost early. Uh, last Sunday, I drove the stock car on behalf of Mayor Tabkey for Cars for Courage. Cars for Kids now call it Cars for Courage for Sister Kenny's Institute. Got a nice big trophy, I did well.
Nice!
Yeah, uh, that was, that was, that was a blast. Um, Derby Days, they've, they've had Derby Days and, you know, it, it was a pretty big venue this year. You know, the, I, I, I think we learned a lot moving forward of what we're gonna have to uh. Do slightly different if you have larger venues. Um, overall, it was uh, I, some things that they have done in the past that they did this year that, that were very successful. So I haven't seen the end results, we'll be meeting on that, but uh. It was pretty good, actually. I mean, all said with such large crowds and stuff, it could have been a lot worse. So the, the minor problems that we did have was a good learning experience for the future. So, the electricity came in very handy, worked very well, so. I think they're glad it's over with. It was, it's a lot of, it's a, it's, it's a really hard job to put that all together, they worked really hard at it and stuff and. At the last minute, you know, and things get rolling and they get all tight and so much going on at once, and they don't get a whole lot of congratulations and thank yous and stuff. And it is a big effort that they put into it, so I think the average person in our community should, should recognize that and. Be a little more uh, understanding and, and thankful for what others do for the community as a nonprofit. So with that being said, that's my report for tonight.
Thank you, Councilman Clay?
The Utilities Commission, um, meeting Monday of this week. The uh, hydrant flushing is almost done now. They finally got back to it after all the rain this spring. Um, water pumpage is down a little bit from projection, although they weren't talking about filing for bankruptcy, that's why they were okay. The uh, there was. On July nineteenth, there was about a thousand customers that were out of power for a couple hours. It uh, was another significant failure of a component that our brand-new Pike Lake substation. The second major one they've had, um, and they're still kind of trying to figure out why, is it just a. Luck of the job, bad odds, you know, or. Cause they, everything has been checked out and tested and retested and.
But the local squirrels are good.
Well, there, no, there were no squirrels involved, as far as they know. Um, other than that, everything's running smoothly.
Thank you, Council Wyden?
Uh, Wednesday, the thirty-first, as part of Derby Days, the Shakopee Diversity Alliance held their first international festival. Which was a great success and well-attended, um, it was a great way to celebrate uh, our city's ethnic diversity and, and, in the community here. Um, a- and as far as Derby Days goes, I, I'll take this opportunity to, to thank all of those volunteers and, and. Staff and chair people of those events, and it is a lot of work and it is a long weekend, so thank you for all your help. Uh, Tuesday, August sixth, I attended several block parties with men, many of you, uh. I had several great discussions with citizens on issues facing the city, so, um, I got a little wet, but I, we got out of there before, so. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Um, on uh, July twenty-fifth, went to the ribbon cutting for the Holiday Inn Express and Suites, uh, the new hotel in town. It's a beautiful facility, um, and it was, they've got uh, a lot of space in there for uh, meeting rooms, and it was a. It's a very nice place, so I encourage everybody to uh, use it when they are around town. Uh, on the twenty-sixth, had a Transportation Economic Development meeting with scale, uh, the major uh, thing that we discussed was uh, the county is. Contemplating a quarter cent sales tax um, for transportation within the county. Um, it is a uh, a quarter cent that the county can levy, and it would go toward um, strategic. Uh, transportation improvement uh, projects uh, within the county. Uh, my, my two cents was that one of those needs to be um, improving eighty-three and one sixty-nine for improvements uh. For uh, events and those kinds of things to make that traffic flow better there. Uh, got some pushback from Leslie on that one, but I'll keep working on it, so we'll, we'll see how that one goes. Um, and then uh, Derby Days, thank you to Matt and Jay for all your guys' work on Derby Days. Um, it was great, um, from an outsider's perspective, I didn't see the issues that you and I know were there. Uh, upon occasion, Matt, but uh, it, it was great, the fireworks were phenomenal, I got. A, an extraordinary amount of feedback on the fireworks, um, and made sure to direct that toward Derby Days wherever I could, um, because they were really good. Uh, on the uh, second, there was a groundbreaking for Progressive Dental, which I talked about earlier tonight. Um, it's uh, right next to Timber Creek Furniture, across from Donut Connection, um, where there was a boat storage chain link fence with. With barbed wire on top, is now gonna be a really um, a, a very uh, cool building. Um, it's, she's got a downtown practice right now, um, and she's building a building out there, um, and to, she wants to incorporate. Other spa and other things into the building, and it's um, the schematics are beautiful for it, so I'm excited about that. And that investment along the one oh one corridor, I think it's uh, gonna be a beginning of a lot of great things. Um, and then as uh, was mentioned, Knight United was great seeing everyone last night, um, and out in the town, and then today. Uh, Ms. McNeil, myself, Samantha DiMaggio, uh, Gary Shelton, and Renee from First Stop Shop. Uh, we met with Data Card, um, and had lunch with Data Card, and they announced to us that they are officially coming to Shakopee. It's a done deal, they've purchased the building, um, and that is happening, and so that is uh. Uh, they're moving six hundred and eighty jobs from Minnetonka to Shakopee and expanding at least another hundred and twenty-five jobs. Uh, here in town, and then gonna become, begin bringing uh, divisions from Denver and New York and other places across the country. Uh, bringing them back to Minnesota, cause they have space to grow, um, and it is a great project. It was done with the full support of the City of Minnetonka, Mayor and their uh, folks were um, wrote letters and were very supportive of doing that. Cause they want people to grow in the region and not go elsewhere, so it was a wonderful project and um. Moving forward, so it is uh, good, they are, um, they have to wait for a building to be built for the current tenants of the building. And um, then they need to do massive renovations and investments in the building, um, and they expect to be in, in twelve to fourteen months. Is when they expect to be fully occupying that building, so it is a great project, um, that we shall be really proud of, so that's good. Um, that is all I've got, do we have uh, anything on item twelve, other business? Seeing none, entertaining motion to adjourn to August twentieth, twenty thirteen at seven PM. Council Wyden?
Motion to adjourn to August twentieth, two thousand thirteen at seven PM.
We have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Clay, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Pass unanimously, we are adjourned at uh, ten nineteen, thank you all.